Okay, that was one meeting down. Our second meeting of the evening is a committee of the whole meeting, which I will now call to order and ask for the clerk to give us a roll call.
Mr. Powersox?
Present.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay, very good. Are there any additions to the agenda or any staff reports? Anna?
We'd like to ask to pull item 14, ordinance approving an agreement with Frederick Burchard for the design and installation of a newspaper rack. We will continue to work with the artist and our legal staff will work with the artist to finalize that agreement.
Okay, thanks. Without objection, yeah, we'll skip that item for tonight and hopefully see it back soon. Any other additions? Yeah, Robert?
Mr. Powersox, there was a couple issues with regard to ordinance numbers. I think they're in item eight and nine. The clerk, would you like to make that adjustment at this point?
Sure. Ordinance number 2009-05-051 should be 050. And the next ordinance, 2009-05-051, well, 052 should actually be 051. Those are the two.
Okay, great. So that's items eight and nine.
Yes.
Very good. Any other additions to the agenda or any staff reports? Okay, seeing none. We have approval of minutes of our previous two meetings. We can take these together. This is the April 13th meeting and the April 20th special meeting. Second. Great, a motion and a second. Are there any corrections to either of those sets of minutes? Okay, would all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next, we have public input. We have a few people here to speak and then we'll have a presentation from a special guest after that. And then the item about the Casey's rezoning that I think many of you are here for as well. There are a few speakers now that wanted to speak before and then there are a few speakers that will speak, have asked to speak at the time of the item. So the two speakers that asked to speak now at the start of the meeting, first I have Jean Thompson. You can come on up and grab a seat here at the public input table. And you wish to speak about ordinance 2009-05-011R. And you have five minutes, so grab a seat. And the little thing like the mouse, yep, is the microphone, so speak into that so we can all hear you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Jean Thompson. My address is 203 North Smith Road in Urbana. I know you've received some, a number of letters from my neighbors about the Casey's proposal. In addition, some other neighbors who could not attend have given me permission to speak for them tonight. And then I have my own remarks. Joe and Kit Donahue, whose address is 504 McGee, where they have lived for 25 years, Mr. and Mrs. Donahue have children, old enough to ride bikes all through the neighborhood. They don't like to have their children going through the Casey's, even during daylight hours because of congregating issues. They don't feel it's a safe or desirable environment. They certainly do not wish to have the Casey's store move closer to their residence. My neighbor, Mr. Dan Reed at 203 Carey, this is directly to the east and a little bit, I guess, north of me. Mr. Reed has lived there since 1992. I believe he's written you in opposition, but you may have not have received his letter yet. He would like me to emphasize that if the mature trees on the proposed site are cut down, his property is impacted by the light from the Casey's. And also, he does not believe that this facility belongs this close to any kind of residential area. So that's from my neighbors. For myself, I believe that Urbana has taken a leadership position in so many progressive quality of life issues, large and small, such as the recently approved neighbor house proposal, which I thought was very exciting to read about, encouraging funding for green technology, the zip cars, rebates for rain barrels, and so on. And you are to be commended on some very good and imaginative work for this community. So how does the community best respond to a proposal for a very large gas station, since people do need gas stations? I understand that there are ongoing discussions as to screening and siting issues regarding my property and some others, and I appreciate the effort that has gone into them. These discussions have not yet matured to a point where I can say they answer my concerns. So since they are ongoing, that's not what I will be talking about tonight. I do believe the size and sitting of this building are why there has been so much difficulty in finding any solution that works for all parties and that separates the two properties in a satisfactory way. So there is the issue of compatibility with adjacent residential properties, which everyone, including Casey's, agrees much be addressed. But there are also land use issues of what is appropriate for the neighborhood, the area, and the community, and that is what I would like to speak to tonight. There is no necessity for Casey's to build on this parcel. Land which is already commercially zoned is a short distance away. This project could have been built there without any delays. Casey's has also expanded and remodeled existing stores. Nor do I believe that this is the only development proposal for this parcel that would be likely to come your way in time. So much effort up to this point seems to be how a Casey's might be built, not whether. There is no imperative that it be built. I've never understood why such a large and intrusive commercial operation should be embedded in what is still such a low-density residential area. I've never understood why so many trees have to come down so that we can have one more gas station. These are trees, I've been told, some of which are probably close to 100 years old. An arborist has told me that there are desirable specimens involved, chinkapin oak, hattberries, sugar maples, green ash, a walnut, and of course, you have your own arborist's report to consult. The proposed store does not provide services that are unavailable elsewhere. It damages adjacent residential properties and it is unwelcome in the surrounding neighborhood. Once built, it closes out the possibility of many other uses and opens the door to future undesirable development. If one argument for this project is that it is permissible because it would be located on a highway, then residents of the five single-family homes on Route 150 just east of Smith Road and the two or three Edgewood houses that abut 150 need to start looking over their shoulders. And Ms. Stevenson, you're going to know exactly the area I'm talking about there on East 150 before you get to, you know, 130. There's some marginal residential property and office park property not far from these homes. And once you allow a Casey's, it's easier to allow other intensive business uses. If this project has considerable negative impact on my property, its future usage may change. Casey's will lead to neighborhood instability. It is not good reuse of an interior lot. It does not represent good planning. This new Casey's store design is intended to bring in as much traffic as possible, both vehicle and foot, for as many purposes as possible, gasoline, convenience items, packaged liquor, and prepared food, morning, noon, and night. This is an excellent business goal, but the wrong location to achieve it. Casey's opens at 6:00 a.m. Some employees may be present as early as 4:30 a.m. to prepare breakfast items, presumably after the 11:00 p.m. close. There are cleanup or other chores to be completed. There would be very few hours of the day or night when there would not be activity at this facility. Would you want to live in my house if they build a Casey's next door? So far, nobody's been able to look me in the eye and say yes. Anecdotal accounts from people who have lived next to similar businesses are not encouraging. My reasons are the obvious ones. You've heard me list them all before. I would only add that light and noise can be measured and quantified. Human behavior cannot. I do have sympathy for the teenagers and older individuals who congregate at the current Casey's location. I wish more of them could find the employment that they need. I do understand the hanging out thing, but it's not the kind of party you want to have on the other side of your fence, no matter how tall that fence might be. Casey's has not effectively policed such gatherings in the past, and one could not expect them to do so in the future. I'm afraid that would be left up to the neighbors. I believe that both city and county residents will be impacted by this project. If the facility is built in its present form and serious problems arise, to whom do we complain? Who gets the phone calls? Casey's should consider building a smaller facility which can be adequately screened and buffered, would retain some trees, and would not intrude so dramatically into the existing landscape. Governing bodies might still find this undesirable, and I would not be enthused to have them as a neighbor, but this would represent my compromise. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Are there any questions from the council?
Heather? I don't have any questions, but first of all, this area that you're speaking of, if annexed into the city, would actually not be in my ward.
Right.
And as far as me knowing where it is, yeah, I do, but I would hope that since we all serve on the Urbana City Council, that everyone knows where this is and not just me.
I know. I didn't mean to pick on you, but you know, I knew that you're the closest representative to that.
Absolutely. Dennis, question?
Yeah. Yeah, we've followed the, you know, the progress of this question and we appreciate your concerns. And we haven't really seen any of the results of the negotiations between Casey's and the neighborhood. I understand that there's an ongoing discussion. And they've, we have a list here in the, on the agenda item that we've reviewed in our packet of several different things that they're proposing to do to try to meet, you know, some of your concerns, which I guess you probably are aware of. So one of the things you said was that, you know, a possible compromise would be to have the store have a smaller footprint and have larger distance of trees and shielding from that. And one of the, one of the things that's being discussed right now is a change in the property line and, you know, perhaps making a wider buffer between your property and the back. How do you feel about that?
Well, a wider buffer is desirable, but you know, 10-foot worth of difference doesn't really protect me. And it does not, I, it does not, I think, address the neighborhood's concerns either. You know, just, you know, this is an undesirable neighbor, as far as I'm concerned. And how do you protect adjacent residents from it? And, you know, so there are, the reason I did not address all of the sighting and screening things is these are still going on, ongoing. They're complicated. There are proposals, you know, I spent all day on the phone saying, well, they're doing this, they're doing that. It seems to change by the hour. I don't feel that I can address them, except to say that this is an undesirable neighbor, and I do not believe the store at this size, at its present size, can be, you know, what's separated from residents. But what I mostly wanted to speak about tonight were just land use issues. Is this a good idea to begin with?
If they were going to rebuild at their current location, which is a couple lots to the west, you would be much more pleased?
Well, I think it has much less impact. I mean, there's distance and there's impact. The current Casey's really has no impact on me. Yeah, and, you know, I can't speak for people that live closer to it. I think there's still some nuisance problems. I think, you know, one of my, my neighbors will speak about his apartment residents who live near Casey's and the problems they have. But speaking for myself, no, the Casey's at that current location is, you know, segregated in a way. You know, it's, you know, off in its own little enclave. This is moving it closer not just to me. I mean, it's, it's so close to me that I'll practically have to buy them their own toothbrush, you know? I mean, it's just that close. But it also brings it closer into a residential neighborhood that really does not wish to have it here.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Jean.
I'm sorry, could I, I forgot. A picture that I took of the site as it exists now, and here's a picture of a big new Casey's, and it helps to illustrate the difference in usages. With your permission, could I leave it with the county clerk?
Yeah, absolutely. If you leave it with the clerk here, Phyllis Clark at your left, she can distribute copies.
She knows how to do it, okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Jean.
Thank you very much.
We have a second speaker tonight, Stephen Neal, if you would like to come forward. And then that'll be the last speaker here at the beginning of the meeting. We'll start into the agenda and there will be more public input at the time of this item. Stephen, good evening.
Good evening.
If you state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Neal. I live at 205 North Smith Road. We moved here from New Orleans, Louisiana, and we're very pleased with the city. It's, especially where we live, it's peaceful and it's quiet and it works great for us. My wife and I both go to school and we both work. As is, we don't worry about any neighbors. We're not having to make any special precautions for security at all. No one really walks by our home. We'd really like to keep it that way. At best, if Casey moves in, we're going to have more light, more foot traffic, and more noise. Worst-case scenario, more crime and a lot more noise. We'd really just not rather have to deal with it at all. It's an eyesore the way it is. I'm sure something else could be done with the property. Speaking of Jean's compromise, if it's a smaller location, the more of a buffer zone, they already have a location two blocks away. I don't see why moving two blocks in our direction would make much of a difference. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Stephen. Any questions? Heather?
Are you north or south of the fire department?
I am north.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, is there any other public input from council members? I know I had one brief announcement, which is that it is Bike to Work Week, and I think Friday is Bike to Work Day, so remember to wear a bike helmet. And a front light and a back light are required if you're biking after dark. And we encourage people to bike in Urbana. If you have questions about how to bike or where, there are maps and information on the MTD website, actually, has a lot of good stuff. It's on the Urbana website as well, though a little harder to find. And there's information at Farmer's Markets, I think, on many Saturdays that you can find at a booth there. And maps in the lobby, yeah. Any other announcements? Okay, into our agenda for this evening, our first topic is a presentation about roundabouts, and I think the mayor would like to introduce some special guests. Mayor?
Yes, Jim Brainard, the mayor of Carmel, Indiana, is here. And he's a member of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. He serves on the Climate Change Committee. He's the vice chair. And he's heard to talk about roundabouts, which Carmel has received a lot of favorable attention. So, there's a presentation for us.
Great. So, mayor, come on up.
Thank you, mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. Before I start, I just have to say two things. It really strikes me every time I go to a public meeting, especially when it's not mine, and listen to members of the public get up. What's just happened here, and it really makes you think what a wonderful system we have. We have a sister city in Japan, and even though they have a democracy pattern after ours, they're always amazed that anybody from the public can get up and talk to their government. It's just a neat thing to watch. And sitting back, watching all of you do it like we do every week, it struck me again. The second thing I wanted to comment about, the mayor was trying enough to give me an abbreviated tour this afternoon of some of the downtown areas. And you have something that Carmel doesn't have, and I wish we did. Our city has grown from 2,000 people in 1950 to just under 100,000 people today. But because it was so small in the 19th century and early 20th century, we don't have the gorgeous historic buildings that you do and the potential to make your downtown. We're actually working hard to try to build a brand-new downtown that adopts traditional design to look like it was a much older downtown. And so I just, it really struck me that you're a beautiful city and are fortunate to have that. What we have done, we now have, let me make sure the system is working.
We see your mouse on the screen and the big screen, so.
I got it now.
A part of it's working. Okay, wonderful.
The mouse apparently supersedes the, everything else. Briefly, our population is, when we made this, was about 85,000. We've just annexed an area with another 13,000, 14,000 people, and so we're just under 100. We're contiguous to the city of Indianapolis. Right next to it, we're on the northern border with this population of, or metro population of 1.8 million, and Carmel's within a day's drive of 50% of the U.S. population. One of the statistics we like to talk about, it's probably similar in some ways to Urbana, we have the, as the U.S. Census defines an adult, anyone over the age of 25, we have the fifth in the United States highest percent of adults with college degrees in the country. And so it's, in that sense, at least, very much like university town. Roughly 100, excuse me, 50 square miles, and we've tried to stay ahead of our growth. But we have, you know, I was training as a history major and then as a lawyer, and what I knew about engineering was nonexistent. But as I watched what engineers did, we started to ask lots of questions. I even made a couple of trips to the Purdue Engineering Library so that I could speak the language and be able to argue with some of the engineers and say, oh, we don't do that in the United States. I've had a feeling that we tend to pave over way too much of our landscape. And so we started to look at how you, it has a lot to do with city design, too, because if we're building on one or two-acre lots, these collector roads that come out from the middle of our city have to get longer and longer and longer, and as a result, we have more traffic on them. And how do you increase capacity? Now, we, you know, I saw a statistic out of the Kennedy School not too long ago, that the average household, the average household in the United States, including all the people that don't even own cars in the big cities, spend, drive an average of 100 miles a day. And we have to, as city officials, have to maintain all that infrastructure. So we started to think, how do we increase traffic capacity without adding lanes? And so we came to the conclusion, and these were laypeople, you know, kind of taking a fresh look at it, came to the conclusion that there's two types of capacity. There's lane capacity and intersection capacity. And that what we normally did in this country was just add lane capacity. Why do we add lane capacity? Well, we add lane capacity to build a bigger parking lot at every stoplight to get more people through on the green cycle. But if people were constantly going through, if you didn't have that intersection there, you wouldn't need all those lanes to park the cars in. And without, if you did that, you could also take a lot of that middle section of that four- or five-lane road and put a green strip in it and plant trees on it, like the picture at the very top there, if you see it on your screens? There it is for the big screen. And you say, well, how would people make a left turn into their house, get there? Well, if you replace the stoplight with a roundabout, all they have to do is go around the circle and come back. So we started to look at roundabouts. I apologize, I used this presentation from another one. We're now up to 60 roundabouts in Carmel. We have more than anyone in the United States. The number-one reason we build them is because we've experienced an 80% reduction, 70%, in our case, 80% nationally, in injury accidents. And that's huge. If government can do something to reduce fatalities and injuries by 78 or 80%, that's something I think that the public should be excited about. Of course, that impacts insurance rates for your city, too. They're calculated by zip code. But we also find they move traffic faster, and we don't have to spend all that money, any extra lanes in between those stoplights. We also find that pedestrian connectivity is much better. Because people say, well, there's not that stop signal. Nobody on this city council, I'm sure does it, and I'm sure nobody in your fine audience of citizens does it, but I've heard that some people in some cities actually speed up to go through yellow lights. And when that happens, and there's human error, and there's always going to be human in my grandfather grew up in a town up in northern Indiana about the size of Urbana. I remember him telling me the story, and I was one of the brightest little kid, I guess. He said, I remember when the first car came to town, and the second week, next week, the second guy got a car, and within three days, they had an accident. And I said, why? He said, well, it was a race. That was not quite getting it part. But my point is that whenever there's two cars, there's going to be accidents. There's always going to be human error. And so our job as city officials, and traffic engineers, I think, too, their job, is to try to design our transportation system in such a way that the accidents are minimal and the ones that do occur don't result in injury or lots of property damage. Then, we started building roundabouts about 10 years ago and weren't thinking that much about global warming or about gas consumption or energy independence, whatever your, you know, there's people I think who come together from all sides of the aisle on that issue. But we realized that, you know, just like a plane, they say in a plane takes off for an hour and a half flight, it uses 40% to 50% of its fuel in takeoff. The same thing's with a car, starting from dead stop. Takes a lot of fuel, gasoline, to get started. So every time that car comes to a complete stop, it really eats gas. And in a roundabout, people slow down. So we have calculated, back when we only had 40 roundabouts, that we were saving the motoring public about 470,000 gallons of gas per year. Because of our fast growth, I should say something. We had lots of opportunities. We weren't retrofitting, although we have as many stoplight intersections. As the city grew very quickly, we were looking at old four-way stops and saying, we want a traffic light or we want a roundabout, and we were going to invest that money anyway. And actually, the roundabouts are slightly less expensive, in some cases, a lot less And that's what I've been talking about, safety, cost savings, benefit for the environment, and smoother traffic flow. People say, what happens when, when they start to get overcapacity? Do you add lanes? Well, notice, let's see, is this, yeah, the picture at the very top, see that little lane that doesn't even come in the roundabout? Right up there, if you look at the big screen? That is what we call a slip lane. And so if you're, that's the motion of this particular one. If you're coming into the roundabout from the top right and want to go off to the top left, you wouldn't even have to enter the roundabout. You can add those lanes on all four sides, and each time you do, I think the math works out, you increase your capacity about 12.5%. This shows our city. You'll see the big road right through there is our outer belt, the city of Indianapolis. But these are all our roundabouts in the city. And actually, we find that they work better. I mean, either have all stoplights, better have all stoplights, or better have all roundabouts. Because you have a stoplight and then a roundabout, the cars are all released from the stoplight at one point, and they all hit the roundabout at the same time, creating just, you know, a few seconds of backup. So having roundabouts in a series makes a lot of sense. And of course, the press likes to have fun. I never really thought I was that short or fat, but they apparently did. This one was right after the NCAA brackets came out in our local paper, our weekly, and says, I don't know which one of you idiots left, I try not to call people idiots too often, idiots left this stupid street plan on my desk, but hello, they aren't, there aren't any roundabouts. What I'm really holding is the NCAA bracket upside down. We did win a climate protection award in the U.S. Conference of Mayors for the gas savings from roundabouts last year at the annual meeting of mayors of the United States. Time Magazine, we joked that we were going to have the cover until McCain nominated Palin, she bounced us off the cover of Time. But we got page 53 in Time Magazine for a roundabout, and it was, you know, they had fun with the words, again, you won a revolution, of course, that's double entendre. And I've been introduced to groups, and they suddenly started the "Yes is Roundabout" song and other things, but we've had a lot of fun with it, too. A lot of people from New England or New York will say, wait a minute, they're tearing out all the old rotaries and traffic circles in New England. In fact, when I first went to one of our consulting engineers, his initial answer, I'd spent some time in England and seen the roundabouts work, his initial answer was, well, they're taking those out of New England. And that's when I went up to the Purdue Library and copied a bunch of articles and took them back to this fairly prominent engineer and said, please read these and then come back and talk to me. And what those articles did was define, one of the things they did was define and distinguish between roundabouts and traffic circles and rotaries. They're very different animals. The rotaries and roundabouts tend to be much larger. In fact, you'll see, if you're familiar with Indianapolis, that's the Indianapolis Circle on the right, which is the very center of Indianapolis. on the right, which is the very center of Indianapolis. You'll see the old, uh, Market Square over there on the top left where it's now demolished. That's where the Pacers used to play. Um, but you see, that's about four lanes wide. And you're not angled as you go into the circle. Notice the island on the roundabout, how you're automatically veering off to the right to enter the roundabout, uh, so that it's easy to turn left and look. You don't go straight into it. That also means if there's a mistake and a collision, it's not a T-bone, but rather a side swipe because of the angle of deflection the cars have to take as they enter the roundabout. Uh, almost counterintuitively, the smaller the roundabout, the safer because of the slower speeds. In the old traffic circles in New England and rotaries, um, they were big. They thought bigger was better. And then people would start to weave among lanes within the roundabout, and there would be accidents. You could also get up faster speeds. Um, of course, you're familiar with the one on the right, that's the architrave, and one of our roundabouts on the left. And again, of course, you look at that little traffic jam down in the corner, only the French could probably pull that off. I don't know what's going on there. But that's about, if you've seen it, it's about ten to twelve lanes wide. Um, and it's a perfect example of a large traffic circle. You're not angled as you go into it, uh, and you weave inside. A roundabout is much, much smaller. This is interesting. In a roundabout, the engineers have pointed out, there's only eight potential conflict points with other vehicles, while at a traffic light with all the left turn motions, see, that's another thing. You eliminate left-hand turns at a roundabout. You're only going in, driving through, and turning right to go out. Um, double lane roundabout, you might have to make one lane change depending, but if you, once you know it, you tend to get in that lane. You're supposed to get in that lane before you enter. So if you're going three-quarters of the way around, you're in the inside lane initially. Uh, you're going a quarter to halfway around, you stay on the outside right-hand lane if there are two. But the point of this slide is that there's thirty-two potential conflict points at a traditional stoplight, while there's only eight at a roundabout. Pedestrian conflicts. People say, "Well, pedestrians don't act, work as well, there's no crossing light." Well, there's not. But if somebody's running a yellow light and you're in that pedestrian crosswalk, the damage is going to be pretty bad to the pedestrian. Uh, especially if they've just accelerated to blow through that light before it turns red. Roundabout, everyone has to slow down to be able to navigate through it. And the statistics for pedestrians, University of Michigan, um, did a study about ten years ago, they put some on campus, and the pedestrians were much safer, bicyclists are safer. You're actually cross, if you look at the slide on the right, w- one car stops at the stop bar and the pedestrian crosswalk is behind the first car waiting, uh, to go into the roundabout or yielding if there's cars in the roundabout. One thing I should say, the US standards are always, you, you yield to cars in the Uh, this slide shows that, uh, large trucks can go through roundabouts without a problem. You'll hear that if you decide to build some. Um, you know, the school buses and fire trucks don't do it. Before we built our first one, we came out and built a roundabout out of cones with our fire department. And we bought, brought out our biggest aerial truck, and the guys all, and women on the fire department all got to experiment with it. And so they've been, instead of criticizing getting the trucks through, they've been some of our biggest advocates because the paramedics in the fire department see that the injuries go down. Um, more than eight hundred people die each year in this country from running of yellow and red lights, and that's what we're trying to fix. Um, Wall Street Journal did an article last, uh, year and a half ago, August, uh, and in this one statistic up on the right, forty-five percent of all automobile collisions in the US occur at intersections. So again, uh, we think if we can reduce the severity of those crashes, it's a good thing. This is interesting. The first two we built in town was, actually, my first project as a mayor in nineteen eighty-six. We needed to add this street right on the edge of the development. We knew it was coming in that direction. This was a, a north-south street that ran into Indianapolis. Brand-new street, went through farm fields. Uh, today, there's houses all around it, there were within a few years. But we weren't quite sure about the roundabouts yet. So at two of the cross streets, the lesser traveling ones, we put roundabouts at two of the others, and they're divided up, they're not in a sequence, we put traffic lights. And the statistics, it was the same driver, same road, um, Ninety-sixth and One Hundred and Sixteenth cross streets, uh, traffic signals. And number of accidents resulting in injury were twenty-five and thirty-three percent of those two stoplights. Same road, mile away, with the two roundabouts, the percent of accidents resulting in injury were six and nine percent. Our study year was two thousand and six. Uh, this came out right at Halloween time. I'm being scared by a four-way stop. Um, this cartoonist has had a lot of fun with roundabouts, and me in general, actually. This is going into what we call our Old Town or Arts and Design District. Uh, those buildings there that look old, those were actually built two years ago. That's why I was saying, you guys have something special here in all these historic buildings. We have to build them to look historic. Um, but we put a roundabout in partially to control traffic in this area, but also to slow everybody down because about, about a block farther in, you're in a very narrow street in this old area, and we have our, one of our major bike and pedestrian trails running through it. Uh, we'll have ten thousand people a day on that trail sometimes on a nice day like this in the summer and the weekend. And so we really, uh, the roundabout can also be good for traffic calming. But here's the average cost of damage is back at that street I was telling you about in the last slide. The two stoplights, two thousand and six, you know, the police, this is the police estimate of damage, thirteen-six, and seventy-three-hundred, the two traffic lights respect, and then at the two roundabouts, they both averaged twenty-five-hundred. We've also found that, you know, the, all the mechanical equipment for a stoplight costs about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you can eliminate that in a roundabout. The asphalt and the concrete's roughly the same, maybe two or three percent more. Um, you have a continual savings on electricity and energy. Uh, and when you need all your police officers, when? Well, it's when all the electricity goes out and you've got a big storm. That's the last time you need to send them out to direct traffic at a stoplight, and you don't need to do that with a roundabout in a, um, emergency situation. This is interesting. This is one of our county roads. It's now been turned into houses. Um, and, uh, on the top left, you'll see what the intersection looked like when it was a four-way stop. We priced signalized intersection, the bottom left came in at nine, this is the, uh, right away, engineering, everything having to do with converting that four-way stop to signalized intersection. The engineer's estimate was nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We instead did a roundabout and built it for five hundred and seventy-seven thousand Uh, emissions, big deal, uh, today. Twenty-four thousand gallons per year per roundabout on ten study sites with different traffic counts, ranging from fourteen thousand to seventeen thousand average daily traffic. Some of ours are now up at forty and forty-five thousand a day, so you can do the math, it's a pretty easy formula, saving a huge amount of gasoline, uh, not to mention people's time. That's what they really appreciate. We get compliments all the time now from people who say, "You know, I search out the streets with the roundabouts." This shows Carmel. This is Ninety-sixth Street, which is nine-point-six miles north of the center of Indianapolis and our border with Indianapolis. Five miles, five and a half miles to the top, and twelve miles from left to right across the top. And you'll see, every one of those, um, circles is a roundabout, either under construction and design or already built. This was, um, third in a series that you've seen. This is, what is it, newly discovered molecular structure, decorative tile pattern for your bathroom or a street map of Carmel. The cartoonist claims he really likes what I do in town, I'm not so sure. Um, this is interesting. We had a major four-lane road that was essence, or it was a state road, divided the community. Didn't even have crosswalk signals. Uh, we had two roads like this dividing the community. In fact, if we go back, I can show you where these are. The one I'm showing you is this one here, and then there's another one here, and that's the outer belt like this. So this road and this road carries, this is about eighty thousand cars a day to Indianapolis and back, and this is, uh, about fifty-five, sixty thousand cars a day. Both busy roads. And it was a state road with stoplights. It was like the Great Wall of China, kids couldn't take their bike and cross. We didn't want to do a, um, signal, or what's called a tight diamond interchange there because envisioned this, instead of getting off on that ramp, you would come to a stoplight here and way over here. And they have to be so far apart, even though they call it a tight diamond, it's really not that tight, because of the stacking distance. The cars that's sitting at this stoplight can't back up into that one. So you've got to calculate how many cars would be there at any one time in your maximum capacity and move those lights. And that means we take, it, we would have taken over, uh, nine hundred and thirty houses at five intersections when we built this. Uh, to do a tight diamond interchange, we had to take three. Uh, huge, uh, advantage for the people. Actually, those people were, um, you know, the corner of a busy road were more than happy to have a good buyer for their house. If one of them put it, put us out of our misery, we can take the money and buy one away from the road. But, uh, so it's a way to retrofit, but you can see the pedestrian crossing where pedestrians couldn't get over to the, where most of our trails are located. Now they can cross, uh, just the exit, the ramp right here, go across a bridge, look only one direction, cross the other ramp, and be across that four-lane highway, there's fifty-five thousand cars a day. Uh, this shows, uh, two, on the left, this shows the number of houses, all those little red blocks, there's forty-three at that intersection if you count them, as opposed to zero on the right with the roundabout interchange. We would have had to take those forty-three houses to get those stoplights far enough apart from each other, about right there and about right there. This, uh, you'll see the bridge over the outer belt of Indianapolis right there that used to back up. I've got some video of that before and after we installed that roundabout. Uh, this is another one that shows the slip lane, and that's, um, the capacity can be added, that's why that slide's there. Um, and they, as I said earlier, they flow better in a series. And you can see that landscaping we put in them. Anybody ever listen to Garrison Keillor? You ever hear a shtick about how Midwesterners are timid people? Humble people. They don't want to be a grither nut from New York. They don't drive like they're from New York. Apologies to anybody from New York. And because we're like that, every once in a while, we'd have somebody that would come up to the roundabout, not necessarily an elderly person, and they'd sit there until the entire darn circle was open and sit there while cars backed up behind them, when really what you're supposed to do is just look to the left. So our engineers figured out that if you build up the middle and put beautiful landscaping in them, they can't see across. And it forces them to look to the left, just like when you enter into an interstate. And that's what we wanted them to do. So even though we are able to landscape, then we get the neighborhoods in the area involved in what they'd like to see, uh, we do put landscaping and build up the middles a bit. We're even getting ready to do some sculpture in, in some of them. Uh, there's some of the landscaping that was first installed. There's a fountain in that one as well. Now, we tried this before. Embedded video on PowerPoint doesn't always work, so if it doesn't come up in a minute, we'll skip it, and I've got it on disk. Yeah, let's skip over it. Um, this shows the pedestrian treatment. At the bottom left, you'll see the pedestrians walking across, and there's, they're one car back from the entrance to the roundabout because that car can come up and yield, go through the roundabout. Um, now there, people have pointed out, well, that car pulled up right over the crosswalk. Why do they do that everywhere? Then you'll see the picture on the right, that's a, what we call a traditional neighborhood design for one of our new strip centers or shopping centers. It was going to be a traditional strip center. We said we wanted a Main Street look, so we had the developer move all the buildings up to the street. Some of them are two stories. And so when you walk down the middle of the street, it's like you're kind of in a traditional downtown area, and the parking's in back. But their objection initially to doing that, of course, they needed to rezone, so we were able to be tough. Um, we, uh, used two roundabouts at either end to calm the traffic, to slow it down before it got to the pedestrian area. So there's the overview of safety, cost, environment, design, and pedestrians. What I'd like to do is go back, I've got these in a different place, and show you, Here's the first one I wanted to show you. That's the bridge over Indianapolis's outer belt as it comes into Carmel, uh, three years ago. Rush hour in the evening, top-capacity hour. And you see the old stoplight, this is one of our conversions, actually, we converted from that stoplight. Traffic engineers don't like cars sitting on bridges, especially old bridges. Um, now, that's an aerial view showing the same month, the same time of day, a year later, and you'll see that there's no tra- with the roundabout in place, you'll see that there's no traffic on that bridge. And then, the last one I wanted to, this is a simulation of our big state road conversion project. We got the state to give us this road, and then we did our own project on it to get it the way we wanted it to be. And this shows before and after. Um, oh, that's after. This is a figure-eight roundabout interchange that I was talking about earlier. You see the pedestrian path on the bottom. We had two hundred accidents a year at these five intersections, and we've had two of them, um, under construction now for seven months of two thousand and eight, and those accident count went down by, uh, sixty accidents, which is two of the intersections under construction. This shows how it's going, how it was converted. This one just opened, uh, two weeks ago. You can see the church in the top left. That church would have been, uh, razed had we done a traditional diamond interchange. This, um, we'll stop this in a minute because it shows five of them, which is of local interest. They all pretty much look like the same ones, if you're not from the area. And that's the way it used to look at that street. That's actually showing traffic projected at rush hour in, in, um, twenty thirty-five. So is anybody, that's really the extent of my presentation. We don't want to, by any means, suggest that you have to do or should do this, but it was just a request of the mayor to tell all of you about our experience with them and what we've learned.
Thank you so much, yeah.
If anybody has any questions, uh, oh, one question that will come up if you do get serious about doing some is, um, turn off the music here. Um, what about elderly people? And what we find, and young drivers, what we find is, in a stoplight situation with a yellow light running, that's kind of endemic, uh, is it kind of endemic, as my mother would say, it is endemic, uh, the reaction time at the slower speeds is so much longer. It's really safer for the elderly and the inexperienced drivers than the stoplight situation.
Great.
Yeah?
Mayor?
That's right.
Thank, thank you very much, Jim.
Was there a question, ma'am?
Yeah, I, I wanted to make a comment. My friend Donna Robinson, who used to live here, lives in Indianapolis now, and she's told me, Charlie was there when she was talking about it, that she prefers to go on the routes that have the roundabouts. She really seeks them out, so I think you have some satisfied customers.
Nice to hear, thank you.
What questions? Okay, I'll start at this end. Diane?
I've driven on some great roundabouts, so this is exciting. But my question is-
I've driven on some great roundabouts, so this is exciting, but my question is, this community is full of trans, not transients, but we have a transient community where we have thousands of new people coming into the community every year. What kind of education efforts were required to teach people how to drive on roundabouts?
We've spent a decade using our government-access television channel. We, I will leave with you in these packets, in fact, what we call the Roundabout Show that our city engineer and I put together, that's played on TV, we play it, we don't have a big budget for our public-access TV, so when we do get a show put together, we play it over and over and over and over again, so lots of people get to see it. We have a city newsletter, it goes out to every business and residence, we've done that, we got the state to put a couple pages in the Indiana Driver's Manual about it. We beg the mainstream media to run articles on slow news days and provide them all sorts of information and charts, and they do from time to time, usually around the holiday period when they want to go on vacation, oh, we can run another How to Drive a Roundabout article. We've, neighborhood meetings, when I go out, we have 200 some neighborhood associations, we go to our farmer's market, and our various festivals, we've had booths with, you know, brochures, I'll leave you, here's Federal Highway brochure, and another one by a local engineering firm, and the city put one out as well, and these are available in all the places that you were talking about, your information being available, farmer's market and the city festivals and City Hall, and we've actually mailed, when the two on the big state road opened a few weeks ago, we, people within three-quarters of a mile on either side of the road, we mailed a notice of the opening and the big ribbon cutting, but also had on the back, How to Drive a Roundabout again, and so it's constant, but, you know, somebody who's unfamiliar with the city, though, it's a safer situation to put them in, would be my argument, I suppose.
Great, thank you. Dennis?
Thanks, I find this really very interesting. We recently had a design proposal for one of the major entries into the city, the Cunningham Avenue, and the designers, you know, perhaps playfully, presented to us a couple of little scenarios for roundabout intersections, and we felt, everybody in the community felt very nervous about them. However, I had just come back from a trip to Europe where many roundabouts, I drove through many roundabouts, and I found, one of the things I noticed was the importance of good signage as you enter a roundabout, especially if it's a larger street, and I, so I'd like to ask you about what you did for signage to help people navigate, or was it really all that necessary?
Absolutely, it's necessary. We have inline pavement or in-pavement markers, which we think of as paint, it's really not paint, it shows a circle and which lanes you should be in to get off, and different ones, we have signage, three signs coming into the roundabout, we have one-way signs, small ones in the roundabout, not that people would actually turn left, well, actually I have seen people turn left into one occasionally. Saw a very, very elderly person once who barely came over this, you know, 20-year-old Cadillac, you get the picture, but the good news was that everybody was going slow in the roundabout, and so she snaked her way off to the left, and she saw where she wanted to go and just went straight, you know, regardless of the traffic flow. But everybody was able to stop, because they weren't going that fast, and she made her way through. But signage is key. When we built our first two roundabouts, the US Department of Transportation had no roundabout standards, so I wrote Traffic Office in London and Sydney, Australia. Never heard anything from London, but the Australians were kind enough to send us this thick book, never got a bill for it, but it was their 400-page roundabout standards book for engineers about site distances, signage, all the standard things that should be done. Now, we've made some changes to that, we've learned over the years, too, where the signs are best, and we were making some changes last week to one of our roundabouts where the contractor put them in in the wrong place. But the US DLT now has good, strong, workable standards that we use, and we help them develop them to some extent for roundabouts in the United States, and so all that information's available to the engineers, but signage is key, but the information's there, how to do it right.
I wanted to ask one more question. It sounded like it was easier to introduce them in new construction highways. We would be looking at a lot of perhaps retrofitting, and I'd like to hear your comments about, you know, since a circle is larger than a T-intersection, about the property, you know, around it to create the additional circular area, how you handle that, and also the difference between like a four-lane highway and a single-lane highway, do you have any like single-lane highway roundabouts, which would be pretty much like a neighborhood roundabout?
Yeah.
You do, yeah, okay.
We have quite a few of those, in fact, we have both single and double lanes.
Okay.
I'm opening this slide show up again, so I want to answer your question, show you a couple things. It's a double lane, but one of the things, that's not a good one to show you, let me find a different one, that's more square, you see how that's squarely in the middle?
Mm-hmm.
Takes about 3% to 5% more land, I would estimate, but it takes it, but you have so much more flexibility with a roundabout. Let's say you have, I'll give you an example, 106 and Gray Road in Carmel, fairly rural residential area, but it was a busy street, nonetheless, two-lane roads in each direction, formerly a four-way stop. We were going to put a roundabout right in the middle of it. We found out that there was a cross-country natural gas pipeline that we would get into with a traffic light or a roundabout. With the traffic light, when we did the analysis, we really weren't able to adjust that traffic light, it had to be pretty much in the center of the two roads for site distances. The roundabout, we were able to angle it, I wish I had a picture of that one, as you went into it, and it's, leaves one of the four corners alone, the one with the gas pipeline, and takes up land on the other three, so if you had, it could work the other way, too, if you had one empty lot and three buildings, just move it over, you just realign a little bit, and the roundabouts really lend themselves to that, with traffic lights down. In the case of the one, we did, that would have been a $780,000 charge to move that gas pipeline, had we done a traditional stoplight intersection, so the roundabout there just saved us all this money we hadn't even counted on, well, we hadn't counted on spending it, so I guess we didn't save it, but it really would have created a problem. Does that answer your?
Yeah, it's pretty good, yes, thank you.
They're more flexible.
Great, Heather?
I, I just asked Diane, because I didn't see your numbers, but I asked her what the population in Carmel is, and she said 85,000. What do roundabouts in a smaller community like Champaign-Urbana, I mean, Urbana has, you know, less than, about half that number.
Well, when we built our first two, our official population was 27,000.
Okay, all right, then that answers.
We've grown very quickly over the last decade and a half, from about 25,000, 26,000 up to now, that number's actually a little outdated, we annexed an area that's going to be closer to 100,000 the next census. So I don't think it makes much difference. I think the key is, you know, back to the educational demographic, we've got well-educated people, and they're probably, eh, you get in trouble when you say that, too, it depends on the person, but you've got to encourage people, give it a chance, analyze it, and make sure that data is out there for them. Sometimes I think that Calhoun might have more success because they have people who are taught by virtue of their being
Sure.
...in academia to question.
Sure.
And so you might, even though it's a smaller town, you might not have as many problems as you think, if you get the information out there.
And, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
What about people who have lived in the community for, I mean, my dad's 60?
The old timers?
And he's lived here his whole life, you know, do they adjust well, do they?
Depends on the person.
Okay. That would mean a no in my dad's case.
I think some of the very elderly struggle with anything that's new and different. When I'm 90, I probably don't want to see anything change, you know, I just don't want to deal with it, but I can look at that person in the face and tell them, you're safer, and your children and grandchildren are safer because we did this, and I can hand them statistics and show them.
All right. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Brandon, it was a pleasure to have you here, I know people wanted to clap before, so we gave them a chance to thank you.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much. I've got, I'll leave with your clerk some information, as you see fit.
Wonderful.
And I would also like, before I leave, if you would ever like to come and see these in person, we would love to host your city council, anyone else you'd like to bring.
Gary back there will probably organize a tour, he's
We'd love to do that.
He's a gentleman right behind you with his hands up here.
We have an audience member who's, yeah, a proponent, and we'd love to come visit.
We would love to have you, and it would be a lot of fun to have you.
Yeah.
I expect an hour and 50 minutes door-to-door pace, so that's far.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, very good. Our next item up this evening is the item that a number of people came to speak about, and so we'll actually switch back into public input mode for this item. The topic will be Resolution 2009-03-01R, this is the resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the zoning map for the 1.04 acre tract of land at 2218 East University with the Casey's retail store. So that will be our next topic, and we will first hear a piece of public input, then we'll hear city staff give a presentation, and then we'll have debate, and just to inform you, city staff are also going to be asking us to continue this case to June 1, final conversations and things are still underway, so after the discussion and hearing from you and everything, we would most likely then consider moving the continuation of this on to June 1 to continue more business then. For tonight, our public input speaker is Dennis Moore, who had filled out a card and wanted to speak about this topic at the time of the item, so Dennis Moore, if he is still here, great, you can come on up and have a seat at the public input desk and tell us your address for the record, and yep, the little thing in the middle of the table is the microphone, so we can all hear you. Good evening.
Good evening, yeah, my name is Dennis Moore, we own the, my wife and I own Mercer Apartments, it's directly west of the property in question, it's 2210 East University, and I just want to just talk a little bit about the, some of the problems that we can see happening with this, we just have, there'd be a lot of noise, lighting issues, I think, you know, you've heard all this before, and would just like to see some good screening and sound deadening, trees or bushes, whatever it would take to do that kind of thing, if it would happen, if it does go through. And I, we do feel that it is kind of a bad fit for this area, because we are, we have several units of, they're kind of longer-term people, we, I think the newest people we have there have been there for just about a year, and that's one person, the rest of them, a lot of our residents have been there for several years, and it's just a quiet area there right now, and the, you know, without moving in, it would, we feel it'd create a lot of traffic, foot traffic, coming from, you know, other areas, cutting across our property, and which we would have to put up a fence, a taller fence than what we already have, to try to stop some of that, and, you know, whether that would stop it, I don't know. But it would just create, we have a duplex that's very close to the property, and I was talking to Rebecca Byrd this afternoon about that, and I understand some of the proposals are to leave some of the trees there and everything, and that would help a lot with that area of our property, but the, that duplex would still be pretty much in the open, even with a fence, it would still be pretty much to the open, to that Casey's area, and I understand there's not to be any parking or anything on that side of the building, but still, you're, you're parking in front of the building, and that would, that noise just kind of, you know, flowed around the building, or it would make its way that direction. And just a lot of noise in general with fans, kitchen, I understand there's going to be a good-sized kitchen there, and just the noise from the fans from that, and fumes, and not as concerned, I guess, fumes coming from the store, because mainly a food-type smell, and, but the dumpster, you know, that's pretty close to the property, so I'm concerned about some smell coming from that. I guess that's basically what I need to say.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Moore? Dennis?
Similar interest or concern by the neighbors occurred when Aldi's was built farther down on 150, and that store tried to accommodate the concerns by, you know, putting up a substantial wall, which I guess seemed to suit the neighbors behind it. I understand that they're talking about, you know, a raised berm and a substantial wall toward the back of the property here. If these things develop and these things take place, do you feel much more confident having them as a neighbor, or do you still have other concerns?
Well, we would definitely feel better about a more solid type wall like they do have around the Aldi's. If there was like a wooden fence or something up there, just concerned down the road, deterioration on the fence, you know, what would, who would take care of it? I mean, I know Casey's would, but getting them to do it would be, you know, another thing, and meanwhile, we have to put up with people cutting through it, and even a plastic-type fence, you know, something like that, I mean, that would be a lot better to us, but a more concrete-type wall, that would make us feel better, I think, and some of our residents, too.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
That is the last public input card that I received, so we will next shift to Rebecca Byrd, our planner on staff here to give us the update on this case. Rebecca?
I'll just give you a brief update this evening. This case came before you on March 2 of this year, at which time the Plan Commission forwarded a recommendation to defeat a resolution of protest for a proposed rezoning of the subject property, 2218 East University Avenue, from County R5 Manufactured Home Park Zoning District to County B4 General Business. Casey's Retail Company is proposing to redevelop the subject lot as a Casey's General Store, which would include a gas station and a convenience store. At that time, the city council expressed concerns about the appropriateness of the County B4 zoning district. The County B4 zoning district converts directly to City B3, which is also general business, and city council asked staff to consider allowing a lower zoning district. In late April, city planning and engineering staff met with county planning and zoning staff and two representatives from Casey's Retail Company, as well as their local legal counsel. At the meeting, city and county staff suggested that the County B2 Neighborhood Business Zoning District might be more appropriate. County B2 converts directly to City B1 Neighborhood Business. The proposed use would require a special use permit in the County B2 zoning district, as well as the City B1 zoning district, and that would allow more control over the site plan, and would also allow operational conditions. Casey's since then has agreed to revise their rezoning petition to the county to apply to rezone to County B2. We also discussed, at the meeting, we also discussed site plan and operational conditions, and there's a list of those conditions, the conditions we agreed to in the meeting, as well as a further list of conditions that we're still negotiating with Casey's, and that list is in your memo. As this project would require a new sanitary sewer permit, Casey's has to agree to enter an annexation agreement with the city. That's under an intergovernmental That's under an intergovernmental agreement with the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District. Any property owner outside the corporate limits of Urbana wishing to connect to sanitary sewer service and annex to the sanitary district must also agree to annex to the city when their property becomes contiguous. The site plan and operational conditions we're negotiating will be incorporated into an annexation agreement between the city and Casey's. As we are still in negotiations at this time, I would ask that you continue this case to June 1 to allow staff time to further negotiate the conditions for the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement will come before you on May 26, at which time the city council will hold a public hearing on the draft annexation agreement. And then on June 1, the city council will consider both the resolution of protest on the county rezoning and the draft annexation agreement. So in sum, this case essentially has two parts. The first is the county rezoning, for which the city has protest rights, and the second is the, the conditions in the annexation agreement that we're negotiating. On the first part, the rezoning, the question really becomes, is the R5 Manufactured Home Park Zoning District appropriate? The site is just over an acre. It's on a federal highway. It's next door to a fire station. The mobile home to build, I'm sorry, a manufactured home park in the county, the minimum acreage required is five acres. This is just one acre. So that zoning designation doesn't seem appropriate for this particular lot. So if it's not appropriate, then we look at other districts, and as it's on a highway next to a fire station and so on, most likely residential is not appropriate either. So if we look to the commercial zoning districts, and we look at the lowest one, the B1 Neighborhood Business, because there is adjacent residential uses next to the property, adjacent, directly adjacent to the property, and the B1 Zoning District in the city would require a special use permit, and so we could exercise more control over the site plan and also operational conditions with that. And then the second part of this case, is this project appropriate? Is what Casey's is proposing appropriate for that lot? And that we're trying to answer with negotiating with them to take into consideration concerns and the conflicts between the different uses, the neighboring uses, and the concerns of the neighbors, and negotiate concessions that will help what they're proposing fit in better onto this, onto that particular site. In your memo on pages three and four, there is an expected schedule for the progression of this case, both with the city and with the county. It will go back to the Plan Commission to discuss the protest rights on the rezoning to the County B2 Zoning District, and then it will come back here to discuss both the rezoning and the draft annexation agreement. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Questions for Rebecca. Charlie?
Yeah, I guess the list of additional measures at the top of page three, I don't know what kind of progress you're going to make on those, as it goes the county, of course. You know, we also have limited abilities with the county, and we can give our best shot, and I expect we will. Number six is no lighting or limited lighting on the rear of the property. I think one of the issues with gas stations is that they tend to, they're really bad at overlighting, and overlighting way beyond what the rest of the neighborhood is, is set up for. And even if they were to use full cutoff lighting, and that's what I would expect, or, you know, appropriately alternative bug-certified lighting, they would also, you know, the gas stations tend to, you know, just really light up, and you end up with all this reflected light off the surface. So my concern here is that no lighting or limited lighting would be, just to have full cutoff lighting or similar, and, and lighting at appropriate levels that don't result in a lot of reflected lighting off the property.
They actually, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Those additional measures, those are things that we did agree in principle to during that meeting that we had with them in April. So we did discuss each of those directly, and they were agreed to. They weren't part of the earlier set of what we had agreed to, and they were having to take these, work these into their, their site plan and make the revisions and so on. So that's why they're in a separate section, but these are things that they have agreed to in principle. And with the lighting, they are, the, they are going to turn off all lighting after 11:00 PM. And the, the lighting that would be on the rear of the property would be kind of like sconce lighting. It would be on the wall facing down.
Any other questions? Yeah, Robert?
Thank you, Rebecca. If, if they go to a B2 to establish this business, how much latitude would the city have with regard to controls?
Controls in terms of the type of things that are mentioned in the memo, or?
Yes.
Those, those are all things we've already discussed with them. We worked with the county to make sure that what we were proposing and what the county was proposing, that they didn't go against each other's zoning ordinances and so on. So these things that we have listed in the memo are things that they've already agreed to in principle.
What I was thinking of, one of the comments one of the neighbors had was proximities. Size was mentioned. Physical limitations with regard to, you know, how far away this building has to be relative to a residential area. Are those integral to that?
They are. The city, because of the annexation agreement and the special use permit that would be required as part of the annexation agreement, the city does have quite a bit of, of control. In speaking with Casey's, they've explained, it's unfortunate, I think there might be a representative from Casey's here this evening? No. I know that the local council did have a conflict this evening, but I thought someone else was going to attend. But they've explained to us some of the difficulties from their perspective, that this is their standard store design, and that it's not financially viable to make a smaller store and to move things. We look at it and we think, well, why can't they just shift the loading zone from one size, one side of the building to the other, where it wouldn't be in such conflict? And they've explained to us how their operations work and why those things are necessary, and that it wouldn't be financially feasible to make some of the changes that we've tried discussing. So the ones that are, that we've discussed here are the ones that they, they say they can work into their project and still make it viable.
Thank you.
Diane?
Being new here, I have just a question. If they're not allowed to do this project, have they said they're going to close the current Casey's store there?
They haven't mentioned to me the, anything about the current store, so I don't, I'm sorry, I don't actually know. They should be here at the next meeting, so they could answer that question.
You were talking about the difficulty in moving parcels, part of the, you know, the loading dock or other parts of the layout, because they have a standard one. If the loading dock is better in the opposite side, are they totally against just like reversing or doing a mirror image of the store, which would be basically not too drastic a redesign? It would just be a flip of the design?
That was our first idea, and they say they, they really can't do that because of how their trucks load and unload and where the loading, the side of the truck that, that they unload from. They literally just can't put it on the other side of the building.
If there are no further questions, I know staff have asked us to continue this case to June 1.
So I'd make a motion that we continue this discussion and reschedule it for June 1.
Second. Second? Okay. Any final discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We'll hear this case again on June 1. And anyone from the audience who wanted a copy of that memo, I'm sure we can get you one. It's also on the city website, so you could see specifically the three things that have already been agreed to, the six things that are still being discussed, and the schedule of dates that this will be back here and, and back at the county as well. So thank you all. Next tonight on our agenda, we have Ordinance 2009-03-024. This is an ordinance amended Chapter 8 of the City of Urbana Code of Ordinances to authorize the charging of costs for certain fire and rescue services to non-resident parties. We saw this first in March, and it comes from Legal. Ron, would you like to tell us about it?
Well, Legal drafted it.
Yes.
It actually comes from Chief, Chief Dilly. Really, the only thing I have to add this evening is that after discussions with the chief, and he has had discussions with Champagne and some other communities, we thought maybe it would make this easier for the council if we changed the definition of a non-resident to include the entire of Champagne County. So any community that is in Champagne County would be considered a, excuse me, not a non-resident, a resident, and everyone else would be a non-resident. I'm sorry, I misspoke. If you are a Champagne County citizen, you would be considered a resident for purposes of this ordinance. Just wondered if that would make it easier with regard to where Champagne, the city of Champagne is right now. Chief, maybe you want to speak to that?
Yeah, in speaking to my counterparts, they're similarly drafted the same provision for the residents of Champagne County, and they're in the process of looking at it. Presently, they feel that it's probably going to be passed. They haven't had a lot of opposition from their particular council on it, but they're still in that process.
There's also the chief, if, I'm sure you all got an April 20th, '09 memo from Chief Dilly. I think the query from the council was, well, who else does this? Marion, Chicago Heights, Gurnee, Addison, Effingham, Bradley, Mattoon, Bourbonay, Park Forest, South Wheatland, Fire District, and Pekin all have similar charges. And surprising to the chief and I in our discussions was that on some of these communities, they charge the residents as well. So it's not, it's not really an unusual thing. They charge, some charge non-residents, but a few of these actually charge residents as well. So, so anyway, I guess what I'm looking for this evening is just direction. If you all wanted to do other things, I didn't draft anything, I haven't changed anything, but I thought with those bits of information, if you all wanted to give us direction.
Okay. I think the mayor's hand was up, and then we'll have other questions. Mayor?
My question was answered by Chief Dilly.
Okay. Great. Dennis?
Yeah, maybe you, maybe you gave us this information earlier, but I'm not remembering. About what percent of the calls you have for service relate to a non-residence, as we're defining them now?
As we're defining them now, it's very minimal. Less than 20 times a year.
Okay. So this ordinance would take, would actually be enacted about 20 times a year?
Less than that.
Or less?
Yeah. It's minimal.
Heather?
Chief Dilly, would you give me on the accident that happened before Christmas with the lady who was actually killed in that accident? She wasn't from here. Would her, I know that obviously the other party is responsible, and so in that case, I would guess it would fall on that woman's insurance if she had it. If someone doesn't, for example, a resident that is involved in an accident like that doesn't have insurance, who does it fall on?
Well, if the resident doesn't have insurance, and the resident being out of the county, and in those instances, those are both county residences, but if, let's say if they were out of the county and they didn't have insurance, which is of course illegal, as we all know, we would still try to bill that individual.
And you can't squeeze blood from a turnip, so how do you, do you legally go about it to get that money back?
Can I, can I take that? The legal, the legal division frequently has to pursue people who owe the city money, and that could be not necessarily because of the fire rescue services. People hit our traffic lights, they hit our traffic control boxes, they hit property, they damage property, knock over trees. They're billed for it, and if they don't pay, then usually we pursue them in court. You know, it'll either be a small claims, or if there was an ordinance violation involved, and that gets charged in city court. If the ordinance allows it, we would seek reimbursement from, in that manner. So in these instances, this would be just like those types of cases. If there is an individual who, you know, owes the city money, we would treat them like any other individual that owes the city.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Say it's a single car accident. Some person is coming from Danville to go shopping at Marketplace Mall, or Lincoln Square. And so therefore, they're going to spend money in Urbana, and some wild animal runs in front of their car. And they get in a single car accident, and they're, and, I mean, I just, I think that there's so many ways around having to, or, I think people could find ways out. And how do we, if, if we're going to pass something like this, how do we make sure? I mean, I guess if we're going to pass this, something like this, we want to make sure people don't have ways around it. What are the measures that are going to be taken?
You want me to take?
If I'm going to answer, then I'd like to address that actually.
Well, they're always going to, when we're trying to enforce our ordinances, there are always going to be individuals that are going to try to beat the system. But, I mean, generally speaking, this, you know, when, when this would be in play, people haven't anticipated this. They're in an accident, and, you know, maybe our fire rescue services have the jaws of life out there, trying to cut them out of a vehicle that they need to be extracted from. So obviously, that person's going to be identified, they'll have the driver's license, they'll be, the car has registration, and we'll be able to most likely identify who was involved in the accident, where they live. And again, we would pursue them, I mean, we have issues sometimes where we, people owe fine money to the city that we've pursued out in California, and in some cases, even out of the country. So we're not always successful, but generally pretty adept at trying to collect money most times, in most instances.
One of the other issues, too, I just thought I'd bring before you, just for your full disclosure, is that because of the amount of highway deaths that occur to emergency workers, you're probably familiar with some of the laws that's recently been introduced, that when you strike a highway worker, even a construction worker, it's pretty serious, and the fine is very serious. So as a result of that, we have instituted a policy whereby if we go out the interstate, we send numerous vehicles. We'll send the apparatus that goes, if it's an extrication, it would take at least two apparatuses and maybe three, because we not only have to cut the people out of the vehicle, but we have to render the first aid to them. We also will send an additional apparatus that will set up down the road as a screen to protect our workers in case somebody comes over and runs over, or, you know, gets out of the way. And we'll also send the command structure, who actually set up the command. So now we've got between four and five vehicles on the interstate to folks who are not paying taxes to the city of Urbana. If a call comes in, then in the city of Urbana to a tax-paying resident, I think we should at least have some type of a measure, you know, to try to help offset that a little bit. And that was one of the, the other issues that came up in this, and we'd obviously call from our friends from the other side of Rice Street to help us if we couldn't respond. But it still brings that issue up. If we have to go out there, that's one of the downsides of that, and that's why we feel like we ought to at least recoup some of those fees for the, you know, for being out there.
Charlie? And then Robert.
My question is an extension of what you just said. You sort of answered it. Would the majority of the calls you expect to come in under this, would they be on the interstate outside of the city, or essentially the, outside of what typically you consider city, a city run?
Yes, sir, it would be. The majority of them would probably be on the interstate. That's where we get our high-impact accidents. Occasionally, we might be on 130 or 150 on the outskirts of the city, but the majority are the interstate calls.
And, and those are the ones that cost you the most in other, in terms of time and money, and, or time and, yeah, time, money, people?
Yes, they are.
Robert?
But statistically, you're talking about a few number of people, 20 a year, and my understanding is everybody should, should have insurance or coverage by law that deals with property damage and, or liabilities. So it would be a rare occasion where you would find a person without.
Yes.
A wherewithal to do this.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This, this would be billed much like- This, this would be billed much like, you know, when the ambulance comes, after the fire rescue has extricated them, there has to be an ambulance from either Provena or Carl to extr, to transport them. That ambulance service is going to submit a bill to that person, and most likely that bill's going to be turned over to that individual's insurance company.
Sure, I understand. Okay, I saw Dennis and then Heather again. Dennis?
Then after the person is taken to the hospital, the last aspect of this is debris cleanup, removal of the damaged vehicle. I'm assuming your department hasn't handled that, but it's a private, a towing company will come out and do that. And I assume that they typically would probably be billing for their services as well, is that correct?
That's correct.
But that's something that, that the city would be involved in doing?
No, that would be up to the, the, or, excuse me, the towing agency that responds.
Okay, all right.
Heather?
Ron, are you telling me that my insurance company, say I were in Florida, my vehicle insurance company, if they, if the Florida Fire Department had to come and pull me out of my car because it was on fire, that my, or because of an accident, that my insurance, that I should have that on, that my insurance would cover a bill for the fire department to come and pull me out?
I can't guarantee that, because I don't know what kind of policy you have, but I will tell you that typically, yes. I mean, ambulance services, when you get transported, you're going to get a bill. As I said, maybe in the last time I spoke about this, my wife and I were in an accident, and she wasn't even transported by the ambulance. And without our knowledge, the police officer called an ambulance to the scene, and they got out and I think took her blood pressure, and we received a bill for a hundred dollars for that, which we turned over to the insurance company. Actually, my insurance company didn't have to pay it. The person who hit us, his insurance company has to pay it.
And, and I understand that, and, but I think, I mean, I just never knew, I mean, is that common? Is that something that, I mean, I didn't think that, like I said, if I were in Florida, that my insurance company would, I guess, I, I'm thinking in my head that firefighters and police officers are there to serve and protect, and I don't, I didn't know that it, I'm, I'm not picking on you, and I, I don't want to come across that way, but you've taken an oath to serve and protect, and I just don't think that it means just the people that live, that pay taxes. And, you know, I don't want to sound rude or like I'm picking on you. That's just my personal feeling is, you know, everybody pays taxes no matter where they live, and if my kid's dying and it's my fault or not, you know, I, I just feel like that's just an added stress, you know, if, to make sure that you're carrying this kind of insurance that is so rare. I, I just, that's just kind of my personal feeling on it. And I, I think I shared that with you last time. I just, it, I think it's catch 22.
Diane, did I see your hand up?
How much revenue do you estimate this would generate? I know you said twenty times a year, minimum of $250, so that's like $5,000, isn't it?
That's correct. It, what, what the state allows is $150 an hour per apparatus and 35 per firefighter with a minimum of fee of 250, and they're actually looking at raising that. So, yeah, you're, you're probably not talking about just a few thousand dollars a year, but.
If you, if you look at the memo that the chief drafted too, there, most of these communities, the numbers that, that they provided, what they charge is substantially higher than what we're talking about here. We're actually going to be on the low end.
Any other questions? Charlie?
I was just going to get into an issue here, sort of a debate issue, and I think Heather brings up a really good point, which is that, you know, you start, you start, this is a slippery slope, you know, you start charging for fees in one community, and then other communities, they have to jump on, and, and it, it does result in our insurance, insurance fees essentially go up, you know, across the board. And, you know, that, that's the whole problem with collecting fees. And, and so some communities are doing it, so it's, it's the, again, the shouting effect, just somebody else is doing it, so we think we have to do it too. And, and so is there a legitimate reason to, to be collecting these fees? Is there some legitimate, you know, if, if other communities aren't providing the services, we are providing, we provide a higher degree of services, yeah, maybe we should be recouping some of our costs, and maybe that's the way to justify it. I'm having a little trouble, but I, I, I know exactly where Heather's coming from, and I raised this issue last time about, you know, where do you draw the line? The city of Champaign, because we have this mutual aid, is it the whole county? We have some mutual aid with the county, and so on, you know, we have a lot of people that commute in from outside the county to work here and shop here, and so on. They're spending their tax dollars here. So, so it's not an easy thing to, to move forward on for myself, and I'm just sitting here debating it back and forth internally.
Well, there are a couple options we could take. We could, if, if people felt supportive of this, we could send it to council. If people felt that more debate would help, we could send it to committee. I guess if we do that, one of my specific questions would be what other information do we want to hear? Is it just debate that we want to have to see where, where we fall in, you know, as Charlie said, there are two sides to this? Or other specific things that we could ask our staff that would help each of you decide where you stand on this issue? Ron?
I have one brief thing to, to say that I've, I just popped into my head, Alderman Smythe brought up. You know, these services are going to be paid for, and what little I've read about fee-based government is suggesting that, you know, in many people's minds, it's better to charge for the people who are incurring the fee for the fee rather than raising everyone's taxes. I mean, so, it's not as if, do we charge these people or nothing? It's, do we charge the people who are using the services, or are we going to use tax dollars that right now are precious to us in most other communities for paying for our services, particularly to serve people who, while they may be in our community for righteous purposes, still don't pay anything into this community in terms of substantive taxes they go to pay for our fire service? So, I just wanted to leave that little notion with you.
Dennis, and then Heather. Dennis?
I think that it does help that the definition of what a resident is has been expanded, because it would seem extremely unfair to charge people who were, who lived fairly close to our community as if they didn't belong here. So, since, since we're, we're fairly in the center of the county, I mean, we're not exactly in the center of the county, but we're, most of the, the communities from which people travel, except perhaps from the east side, a lot of the residential areas in the communities, which you would call bedroom communities to Urbana, Champaign, you still are in the county that's somewhat of, you know, that's somewhat less onerous to incur. People though, who are, you know, to our east and who might be in Provena County and who work at the University of Illinois, may be affected by this the most. And I'm wondering if, if, if we might want to expand the definition of a viable resident, you know, as far as, you know, St. Joe or something like that, which is, you know, cross, you know, cross-cultural. I don't know, would you have a comment on that?
Mayor?
St. Joe is in Champaign County.
Yeah, you know, you're right. Okay, done. That's a problem solved. And I think Heather, I saw your hand up too first.
About not paying the people that this would affect would be the people that are the twenty call, or the people who don't pay taxes. Well, there's a hundred people that do, that I think value life enough that wouldn't be too upset about the taxes that they pay going to these things on life. And I guess that's kind of where I'm, I'm having a hard time with my mind with this. I just, I feel like if I have family on vacation, something like this would have happened if I don't pay taxes in my city, would mean that they don't value me and my family life. I think that would probably make it a little, to them saying, that's not true, which I do, that I care about, and, you know, I can pay taxes, but those taxes are not due. This is my, when I'm home, we are kind of other people very often.
Okay, Robert?
I still, you know, have a, and I don't, I don't think it's, in economic times like we're in right now, we, we have this quandary of thought about how we feel about those that may not have wherewithal to take care of this. But there are laws that exist that tell us that people have to have liability and property damage. That's what our attorney just said. And it's, it's part of the insurance, to drive a vehicle, to walk down the street, these things people have, and they pay for them every day, irregardless of the community they live in. And they, they're at their disposal in terms of paying for services when they need them, and that's what you pay insurance for. And I think the only person that this would adversely affect would be the person that is not legally responsible, and not have an insurance capability for driving across town, or doesn't have insurance on his vehicle. That would be the person that would impact the most. But for the average person that is lawful and is trying to follow the rules, and happens to get into an adverse situation, such as an excavation, I mean, he's not digging him out of the ground, but from a car or vehicle in a very bad accident, that would be covered, the fees and cost. And all of, all we're saying, I think, is what we're saying is, we are utilizing our people at a potentially inopportune time that could cause adverse effect on the taxpayers of the community. And what they want to have available to them is to receive the, the money for the use of that equipment that's out there, but additionally have access to additional support within our community. Having equipment that you're going to use, you have to amortize it over a period of time anyway. So, this would allow them to have the good equipment all the time, and not allow it to be deteriorating as they go out on a, on a, on a serious situation, and keep it in good shape at all times. But the main issue, in my opinion, is the fact that our, our firefighters are putting themselves away from the people of our community that are paying taxes, but they're getting compensated for it. And they also have the resources through the network of providing additional help if necessary. So, nobody really loses here in this situation. It's a win-win for everyone, plus our, we're on the low end of the totem pole in terms of dollars, obviously, but our, our firefighters are getting a way of amortizing the cost of their equipment, their, you know, these vehicles aren't cheap. And it helps the taxpayers here by doing that, in my view.
Okay. David, I think I saw your hand. This is your first time on this issue?
That's my last.
And that's his last, yeah. Yeah, mostly I'm not saying much today because I've got a sore throat, so if this, if this were smell-avision, you'd pick up that mental weakness. So, I'll keep it really brief, which is to say that in this case, I think Heather speaks for me. I think this is, this is one of those things that speaks to the, the soul of the community. And I, I think that, I, I just wanted to say that I agree with you.
Yeah, this is sort of, I'm, I'm still going to be thinking out loud here, and, and I think Ron and, and, Robert are saying sort of the same sort of thing here, is, is this a justifiable fee-based expense? You know, is it comparable to the other things that we charge fees for, you know, building permits, you know, there's certain, certain special things that we charge fees for. We've not gone into something, you know, fire service, you know, specialized, what it, what this is, is a specialized EMT service in a lot of ways. And we do provide a higher level of, of EMT training than many counterparts, is that right? Yeah, we, we have EMT Level Two, right? Is that what?
Yes, MTI.
MTI. So, we provide a higher level of EMT service than many other communities in downstate Illinois, is that right? You know, Champaign doesn't even match us on that, right? Or do they now? Yeah, they don't, okay. So, I mean, you know, if you're going to have a heart attack, have it in Urbana, not Champaign, you know, simply because they're better trained, you know, the first responders might be better trained. We have to pay for that training. The taxpayers are paying for that training. So, so again, this is, this is the point, you know, is this a justifiable extra fee that we should be out there charging? And, and then of course, if, if it is, where do you draw the line? Is it Champaign and Urbana residents only? Is it Champaign, Urbana, and county residents? You know, county residents don't pay into, you know, into city taxes for this. You know, we have only a certain proportion of sales tax that comes here, more than we used to, which is nice. So, you know, maybe it is a legitimate expense. I'm still having trouble deciding which way I fall on this.
Mayor? Yeah, okay, chief first, and then mayor. Go ahead.
I'm not trying to influence you guys one way or the other, because I do understand your thoughts on this, because I've had those same thoughts. But in trying to look at this with all the facts, just for instance, a piece of extrication equipment, which when I started on the department, we had one, we have them on all our apparatus now, they cost $15,000 apiece, and, and we budget for replacing those. But if I were to go out on the interstate and begin an extrication operation on a vehicle and break the tips on one of these, that's $500. And so, we were just trying to find ways to recoup the funds for the potential of losing those for delivering those services. And boy, Heather, I understand what you're saying, and it, it doesn't mean that we think any less of those people, because we're going to go out there and do it irregardless. In fact, if our neighbors in St. Joe, or, or our neighbors in Ed Scott, if they ask for our help, we're going to go give it to them, because we do care about the people. We're just saying, can we get a little extra money to try to take care of the equipment that we buy and pay so much for all the time?
Mayor?
Yeah, I don't think it's a question of, that we don't care about somebody's life. Obviously, someone who gets taken to one of our hospitals, they care about the person's life, they'll do whatever they can, but that doesn't mean that they're not going to bill them. And everyone pays taxes to buy the equipment and to pay for the employees, and I think the fairest thing is someone who uses a service pays for the service. And I think this is in that category. So, I, I do think it's fair. I think it's reasonable.
Diane?
I have to say, it's much easier thinking about the ambulance license fees. That's no problem for me. But this is, this is a difficult one, but I, I'm tending to agree with Mr. Lewis and the mayor on this one.
I have a question for Chief Dilly, and then I would suggest a, a course of action here. Chief, I think I asked this question, maybe it didn't get a public response, but we have, we have some specialized equipment in trailers, which is, which we, is a service we provide for a region, right? And that doesn't come into play here, or does it?
It, it does not. However, we, we do already charge, and it's in the state law, if we would respond to a hazardous material spill. It's called the spill or pay laws. So, if an individual is transporting hazardous material throughout our city, and they, and it fell over and leaked, we'll go out and take care of it, but we have the ability to recoup our fees for that. And similarly, Charlie, the, the technical rescue that we haven't started charging for yet, that someday we may have to look at that, because if they call us out to be their team, then we have to spend that extra time and money, we may have to even consider that someday, but we don't presently do that.
Okay. Now, that, that technical equipment, is that, is that something you keep for the whole county, or, you provide, this is a service we provide for the county, right?
It's actually even more than the county. It's a statewide asset. Part of the assets are, are monies that, or, equipment, I should say, that's been given to us by the state, and part of it are out of the city funds.
Okay, so, so we don't have all those costs covered then, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would, you know, one way we could do this is to speed it along, is just send the
send this to council with, expecting a final version, and, and make a, you know, we could think about it over the week and make a decision next, next Monday.
Would you like to make a motion?
I wanna hear what Heather has to say first, though.
Um, one, I prob- since I've only asked questions, and I have, I've, I've asked questions, so, um, I can ask a hundred questions, right? But I only have two, five, ten minutes to, to make comments. So, my question is, how would, say, nine eleven play into this, for example, if we're sending people to New York?
This would be no different than our Mavis agreement, or our countywide rural fire agreement, that we have promised our assets to other departments for free. And that's part of the agreement that we have. This is a little bit different in that we're not sending an asset to another department, we're taking our own assets and responding to individuals.
Charlie?
I'd, I'd like to just make a motion to send this to council, expecting a, a final version of the ordinance from staff.
Seconded. Okay, seconded by Robert. Any final discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries, we'll see that at council next week, thank you. Next, we have item number eight on our agenda, this is ordinance number 2009-05-050, that's the correction to the typo, 050 is the right number for this ordinance. This is an ordinance from Public Works, amending Schedule J of Section 23183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on Colorado Avenue, a portion of Colorado Avenue, and, um, we will hear from Public Works Director Bill Gray. Bill?
Thank you. When Colorado Avenue was built, east of Fowl Road, these were the dimensions that would not allow parking on the street, particularly so noted here between Fowl Road and Prairie Winds Drive, and then east of Prairie Winds Drive, it's wide enough to accommodate parking on one side. So, Traffic Commission considered this request, and it's for council consideration.
Any questions? A motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to accept this and pass it to City Council with approval.
Seconded.
And there was a second? Any other discussion about this one? Robert?
No.
Oh, that was okay, just one of the seconds, good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see that at council next week. And next, we have ordinance 2009-05-051, this is an ordinance approving the CU Solid Waste Disposal Systems annual budget for FYO 9, 2010, and again, Bill Gray.
Uh, this item, the Champagne, Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System, has been discussed with City Champagne, City Manager Steve Carter, and mayor. They present before you a budget for this upcoming year, there's no real out-of-the-ordinary landfill activities, and, um, your request for approval is recommended here.
Charlie?
Quick question, Bill, what happens in 2018 when this agreement runs out? Do we negotiate a new one, or is the landfill officially closed at that point? Uh, I know we're, we're collecting lead shade, I-
Correct.
Yeah, so-
I think it's probably our decision, but I would need to check, um, probably with our solid waste manager to get a clarification of that. The Hoesman Agreement expires, uh, we could certainly discuss it at that time, I would suspect that we'd be intent that that agreement might continue on as far as, you know, monitoring the wells, but, um, I'd have to find out what happens, I'll let you know.
I rec- I make a motion to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
And seconded, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, okay, thank you again, Bill, we'll see that next Monday as well. Uh, next, we have a number of items from Community Development this evening. First of those is ordinance 2009-05-047, this is an ordinance repealing ordinance 2003-03-024, approving, and approving and authorizing the sale of certain real estate. This is 1107 North Gregory and 1109 North Gregory, both to the Homestead Corporation of Champagne, Urbana, and John Snyder's here to tell us about it.
Um, basically, uh, we needed to repeal the previous ordinance that authorized the sale of the city-owned property to, um, Yvette Brown, who was, was going to use it for expansion of Peter Pan Daycare Center. Since that time, um, Ms. Brown has met with staff, and we kind of figured out a way, if she did want to expand, she could expand on site. So, then the properties became available, and Homestead Corporation actually requested those two, um, properties, and, uh, I think that, uh, many of you are aware that Homestead has already developed homes in the Eat Street, they actually completed the ICFCI agreement, um, I believe it was in 2003, 2004. So, um, with that, it's a standard contract, similar to the contract we discussed earlier, um, but, um, Aaron at Homestead didn't express any concerns about the land use agreement, so that, basically, is what's for your consideration.
Charlie?
John, with, uh, with our interest in, in energy-efficient homes, you know, Kerr Avenue-type stuff, uh, what kind of homes will Homestead be, be putting up here?
The Homestead's standard home includes, uh, six-inch sidewalls with, I believe it's R17 insulation. The home program requires that they meet the Model Energy Code, which was produced by Cavo, I, I suspect that, um, they'll, HUD will require that to be updated sometime in the near future, but, um, they also, I believe they do R40 in the ceiling, so they, they extend themselves beyond what's required. And one of the, I think one of the breaking points in the energy efficiency versus super-energy efficiency is the cost of developing the house. And the cost to develop the EcoLab house, the one that, um, is going to be sold hopefully sometime this week, it was, I believe it was in the range of a hundred and seventy thousand, where the cost to develop this is basically the sales, around the sales price, which is in a hundred and twenty thousand dollar range.
Charlie?
Yeah, to continue this thought, is, is, uh, there are some new technologies out there, I know some of it comes from the passive house stuff. Um, I guess I would, I would like to encourage them to, to, you know, reexamine what they've got, what they currently do, and see if they can do a little more for minimal additional cost. Uh, that would be what I'd like to encourage them to do, you know, just, you know, they, they already do, do quite a bit, you know, is there some other stuff out there? Uh, are there people doing some work here in town? You know, somebody like Ty Newell might have some ideas, I know they're gonna be doing a, a house at Barringer, for example. Uh, are there some other techno- technologies that could be incorporated, uh, in these two homes for, for not too much more, but that would take advantage of some of the things we're seeing from, from things like the passive house construction and so on? Uh, that, that's sort of what I'd like to encourage them to do.
I can ask Aaron to do that, to look, and, and I think there'll be a, a period of time between when we sign the contract and when they're actually able to start construction, because they're focusing their efforts on Crystalview Townhomes, and they have a, a few other projects underway. So, I mean, this'll give them time to look into the newer technology as well.
Okay, Robert?
Uh, while we're, while we're here, I'd like, uh, I'd like you to, to, um, talk to council about the concept of the land use regulation, um, requirements of the agreement, and where it potentially will go in the near future. So, maybe we can look at this and, and get it out of the picture.
Well, um, in the, in the history of the program, the, the home program actually has requirements that require any PJ, or what's called a participating jurisdiction, to ensure affordability by recordation of certain documents, either deed restriction, which is what the land use is, or a, um, a mortgage and note. And we've typically gone with a mortgage and note, uh, because in our mortgage and note, during the affordability period, if the property's sold, then we can, we have it set out so that it's a net sales proceeds. Uh, one of the things that, another thing that the home program requires is, if a property is foreclosed upon during the affordability period, if you do not have a net sales proceeds part in the, in the mortgage itself, where the city would receive a net sales proceeds, the, the homeowner receives, basically, and the city receives a representative share of their investment. Homeowner invests a certain amount as return, so it's a, a pro-rated share between those two. And if we didn't have that in place, then we would be liable, the consortium, the city, depending on where it's located, would be liable for paying back the entire amount of the home assistance. So, that's why we have the net sales proceeds. When we have indirect buyer assistance, which we try to avoid, is, is, they require a deed restriction. But with the Community Development Block Grant Program, as I explained earlier, there is no requirement for an affordability period. And we researched, uh, I asked, um, the deputy clerk to research any old ordinances that were passed regarding policy or any policies, uh, couldn't find any, we couldn't find any in our documentation. So, um, uh, we were trying to understand where the actual, in a, I believe it's just an unwritten policy that came from, you may recall during the time, the Urban League was, um, kind of nudged towards going to a ten-year affordability period to ensure that the properties remain affordable. Most of the properties that we assist are, are, are built in areas that are already considered affordable housing areas, and we provide assistance to bring them down to the, to the amount that homeowners or potential buyers in the eighty, below eighty percent of median income can afford to purchase. We can also provide a home program assistance after, if somebody's selling, we can also provide additional home program assistance for another buyer, um, through a program. So, there are options for us to pursue to ensure affordability other than the deed restriction. And it's just been a standard contract procedure that, that, uh, we followed, that the deed restriction was on, on the property.
What I wanted to say is, we just experienced a not, you know, where this, where this thing became a stumbling block. And I think for developers in the future, this could be, be potentially a problem later on as well. So, we might want to consider, down the road, of taking this stipulation out and just going what we presen- doing what we presently do. Because what this does is just adds confusion to the system, and I think it's redundant to have it in. Do you agree or disagree?
I, I think that, um, up until now, we didn't have a problem with it, but I think, given, you know, the mortgage crisis, the lending crisis, and the very tightened, um, underwriting guidelines, uh, it, it may come up again. I mean, if you were a lender and you noticed that this, the requirement, it, it certainly, we would like to, uh, work with FHA or whomever to include language that would protect them in that situation, um, because this is, you know, this is more of a city policy than it is a HUD policy, so we, you being the policymakers can make that decision. But, um, it, it's, I think it's a lot easier sell if, at closing, this is honestly what happened, was they got to closing, they were ready to close, we had it scheduled, we had the checks cut, FHA found out about the land use restriction, and they, they pulled the plug and said, "We have to review this." So, I mean, that's certainly consideration, and from what I understand, talking to other lenders, they may have a similar concern.
Any other questions? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to send this to council with a recommendation to approve it? Charlie?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None? Okay, thank you, John, we'll see that one next week at City Council. Next, we have two resolutions, both certifying some community housing development organizations for the Urbana Home Consortium for this next fiscal year, 2910. The first for Homestead Corporation of Champagne, Urbana, and the second for Ecological Construction Laboratory, and we can take them together. Uh, John, can you tell us about these?
Uh, basically, this is a, a standard procedure, uh, we do an annual recertification, um, of our local Chodos to ensure that they meet the HUD regulations, all the federal home program requirements for recertification, among which is that they maintain their 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, they, uh, ensure adequate capacity, or they have adequate capacity for development of affordable housing, and, uh, board member makeup must include an adequate representation from the low-income community, and they also must engage in outreach to the low-income community. Uh, Janelle Gomez, our home coordinator, uh, did the onsite monitoring of both these agencies and found that they met all those requirements.
Charlie?
I move to send both these resolutions to council with a recommendation for approval.
I second that.
Okay, seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, we'll see those two resolutions as well next week at council. Next, we have an item about the newspaper rack, this is ordinance 2009-05-048, an ordinance approving an agreement with Champagne County for the placement of a newspaper rack at 101 East Main Street at the courthouse site. And we have Anna Hohalter, the arts coordinator, to tell us about it. Anna?
Good evening. This is an ordinance for the approval of an agreement with Champagne County for the placement of a newspaper rack at the Champagne County Courthouse Site. And, uh, one of the City Council common goals set in 2005 was to integrate art into feasible public works projects, and so, um, the community development and public works have worked together to identify, there was a street scape concern, and we've identified an artist-designed solution to try to address that concern. And so, what you see, uh, before you is the, um, ordinance which would approve an agreement, and it's the proposed agreement with the county for the placement of a newspaper rack design, entitled "The Urbana Stand." And the staff recommendation is to forward the attached ordinance to City Council's regular meeting on May 18th, as presented.
Any questions for Anna? More motion? Okay, I saw Charlie's hand, and Dennis, Charlie?
Yeah, a quick question for maybe Anna and, and Ron here. Um, you know, people laugh when I mentioned, uh, electronic services aspect to this rack a couple weeks ago, or whenever it was, but I, I think I'm very serious about that, uh, because I think that, long-term, uh, some of these newspapers may have only an electronic presence, and, uh, they may want a kiosk-type, uh, operation set up. And as far as I can tell, I don't see anything in the language, um, that would, would preclude, you know, an electronic aspect, you know, or electronic kiosk to such a rack, uh, you know, that's the way I read this, I, I don't see anything that would stop, stop the artist from incorporating that if he wants to, or retrofitting at some future date, is that...
I'll, I mean, could you refresh my recollection as to what electronic, what you're-
Well, you know, this is a newspaper rack, okay, you've got a, you know, you've got this nice display with some, maybe some historical stuff on it, um, uh, there's a design, and, you know, part of it's, uh, it's sort of spread out over both, the, you know, one is, what is the agreement with the county to do something, but the second one, which we're not looking at tonight, is actually, an actual design of what, what's gonna go there. Uh, so, uh, there's nothing in the ordinance that, that, with the county, that would preclude us having an electronic, uh, kiosk-type situation, you know, suppose a newspaper just simply wants to have its web, website there, you know, some electronic aspect, and, and the way I look at the, the artist design, I could, I could see, uh, you know, he's talking about etched glass and so on, we have new technologies that are coming, you know, liquid paper, essentially, you could easily incorporate something like that into a design like this. Uh, basically, you know, it's a, basically a website kiosk-type situation. I'm just trying to think to the future, and I don't see anything that precludes that from, in this ordinance, that's just what I want to check, and, you know, and as, as Bill Dijonette pointed out, too, there's fiber right, like, literally right underneath this street, right there where it is, so...
So, I think, Ron, there, the question for you is, is there anything that precludes a different type of newspaper dispensing, you know, thing, even if it's an electronic kiosk, from being installed there by the city at some future date?
Well, remember, this is a bilateral agreement, so, we're, we're still currently negotiating with the artist as to, um, installation, maintenance, and there's some other collateral issues. So, if you're asking, is there anything that precludes us from doing that in the future, I would say, no, I mean, we can always approach the county again and say, you know, we have an idea for this, as it pertains to the artist, I can't tell you what his thoughts are-
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking at, you know, the two-page agreement.
Yeah, just the black and white page, no.
Okay, I saw many hands, we'll start with this, and Diane?
This is the first time I've seen this, so I guess my first question is, how far along are we in this process? Does it matter what we think at this point?
No. No. It doesn't. This is a pro forma area. No, it, no, we're not, we're far along, this has been going on for two years?
Yes.
Two years? But we are still trying to negotiate with the artist about some details, so...
Well, all right, I'll make my comments anyway. I, I have to say, I am having a hard time seeing the, making sense of this, I guess that's one way to put it. It's a fifteen thousand dollar newspaper stand, and as Charlie has pointed out, um, and I went by the site on Sunday, we've got three commercial news racks at that corner now, the Tribune, USA Today, the News Gazette, and then the rest of the news rack at that cor- the newsstands are giveaways, like, um, Real Estate Guide, and the Thrifty Nickel, and that sort of thing. So, yeah, it looks crummy right now, but I'm just having trouble justifying this kind of a structure as a solution, when the newspaper industry has changed so much in the last two years since this was first proposed, and who knows what, as, as been pointed out, what it's going to be in the next couple of years. And I think a functional street art, which I love the concept of, should, should be flexible enough to- be to move it from this fairly busy corner to, as I understand it, to the northeast corner of the courthouse facing Main Street, and how much pedestrian traffic or use it would get there. But the other question I had is, is there a commitment from distributors to keep this thing filled with papers? What do we have going down the line? This is a long-term investment and a lot of money for a single-purpose item that may lose its function over the life of the project.
So Anna, maybe could you speak to that question of the location and of people stocking these machines with newspapers?
Sure. And overall, your likes of telling me? Well, I think this issue started, it actually predates my time in the city, but before the courthouse did their renovations, their more recent renovations, the newspaper racks were on Main Street. And it was a temporary location for the newspaper stands to be located on Elm and Broadway. And they were there temporarily, they're not secure, and so they may pose potential hazards due to that, their insecure installation on the street. It's also, it can impede pedestrian and vehicle traffic, because people stop at the stop sign, and then they get out and get the paper. And so, the location, we worked hard with the county courthouse and Champaign County officials to identify a site that both meets their safety concerns and would be accessible to the public. We actually see it as a benefit to put it in this location, because you would have more of the traffic that's going to the courthouse, who would be able to get it while they're in the parking space. There are also, you would be able to pull in off of the street to get the newspapers instead of blocking traffic. So those are some of the concerns that are trying to be addressed.
And to the question, the part of the question about stocking the newspapers, will they be for sale?
I have to say, we haven't analyzed that very deeply. I think it would, Tom has...
Yeah, I see Tom raising his hand.
Well, I just wanted to add, as far as the selected location, the county, in various employees of the county have rejected many proposed locations. And this is two years' worth of negotiations, as far as determining where the location is. The sheriff, other city, or other county employees have nixed other locations, and this was what they finally agreed to, and it seemed a reasonable location to us. As far as what will be available in the newspaper rack, our thought is, it'll be a combination of paid receptacles, where people will insert money to get a newspaper, and free publications. And what we had talked about is, the receptacles that have a coin mechanism are more expensive to install, because they have a complicated mechanism. And then the free publications are a less expensive receptacle, because you just, it has hinges and no mechanism. So depending on the combination of how many coin-operated versus free publications, we need to take a look at whether we're going to charge publishers for space in the newspaper rack. And that is something that we've discussed. The selection committee included a representative from the News Gazette, and they talked about their work with other newspaper receptacles. So the question is, if we're going to charge for someone to have space in that, that hasn't been determined, based on the fact that we need to figure out what the mix of paid receptacles versus unpaid receptacles will be. But it hasn't been determined if we're going to charge rent in the newspaper rack.
Okay. I'll move down the line.
I hope that answers your question, or at least part of it.
Okay. So based on this conversation, I have questions, two questions. I also was sort of wondering about the proposed location. It didn't seem, I mean, having been a person who often caught the bus at the, you know, the bus convergence area there, it was extremely wonderful to be able to just, you know, pick up the paper as you boarded the bus. Okay, that, so now the papers are located in a place that services mostly people in cars, who are coming in to park, or who are pulling in off Main Street, but it doesn't serve very well the downtown pedestrian. So my question is, to the arts commission, now that we've got, say that we accept the concept, the art concept, which I think actually is very handsome, and pretty functional, do we necessarily need to limit it to the courthouse property? Would it be wise to reconsider a location that's elsewhere in the downtown area that is more accessible to the shoppers and people who are, you know, walking? And there might be numerous places, including, you know, in front of Lincoln Square, in, you know, in front of the courthouse, not the courthouse, but the IMC, or over at Strawberry Fields, or maybe in, you know, in front of the parking garage, where you could still catch the bus, and it would be on the sidewalk, and there might be an accessible place to locate this that might be better than in the county courthouse. So that's my first question. And then, this question is then to Charlie, perhaps. I do, yes, we are seeing a transformation of the newspaper industry. It'd be interesting to know kind of what thoughts would make, how this could be slightly changed, or what mechanism might be added to it to make it computer-friendly, in that it's exposed to the public and the weather. And if you were going to go online to read your newspaper, I mean, is that really what you think the News Gazette's intending to have people stand and read the newspaper in front of this event? Or, there's no way of downloading the newspaper from this location to take with you on the bus? So, I mean, do you expect people to, I mean, I don't know what technology would engage in newspaper reading, experience. Your credit card, and you get to see the front page of the paper for 10 minutes, and then it goes off again? I don't, I'm not sure how that would work out. So assuming that, in the future, the boxes that encase the newspapers today and just carry them, might be retrofitted to have computer parts, and if they're at an appropriate height for viewing, there may be ways of altering the configuration of the box structures to accommodate, you know, a digital display. So, I'd like to, you're talking more about perhaps a glass imagery of newspaper headings?
Yeah. I can't say what's going to happen either, except that, you know, the liquid paper technology is coming along very quickly. And, you know, we've got the, you know, the second generation, the Amazon Kindle. There's somebody else talking about an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet, that coming out towards the end of this year. That sounds very exciting. And, you know, just hard to say what will happen, you know, in the future, you know, maybe somebody, you know...
So maybe one of the panels could be adjusted to become...
Yeah. You know, it's more like what the artist could conceive of, and what could be retrofitted some future date. But you're right, you know, it's exposed, something like, what I'm thinking of might be more appropriate inside of a bus shelter, for example. You know, we already have displays of, you know, time and the bus is coming.
Yeah.
We have some electronic displays already, so it's, you know, the small electronic displays like that are not going to be unusual, I think, in the future.
Well, to continue my discussion with you then, those kinds of displays might be, if the newspaper companies or the publishers are not going to be activating them, they could end up becoming really interesting city directory locations, that would, you know, that the city webpage or information about the city could be scrolling on these things, and that would be very interesting.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I'm just asking these questions, because I understand that, you know, that the uses, you know, can change.
Tom, and then Anna, I think you both might have had a response to this.
In relation to the location question, there were times when it appeared we may or may not be able to negotiate with the county. And in the absence of being able to negotiate with the county, we looked at city right-of-way opportunities, as well as opportunities in and around the parking deck. We didn't go much further than that, because we felt it needed to be near the courthouse to be useful, in that that's where the market has driven them to this point. So in regards to the parking deck, it was difficult to identify an area where there was enough room to maintain ADA accessibility on the sidewalks, and have the newspaper racks. There were some opportunities for right-of-way, using the right-of-way along Main Street, but there's an issue, if you put them right on Main Street, do people park in the right lane, jump out of the car to grab a newspaper, and then get back in, which is kind of an unsafe situation? And it was determined that, working with the county, we had found a suitable location that was pretty safe, didn't create any danger for, the county sheriff had issues with the newspaper rack being in certain locations, because it was, a person could hide behind the rack, or they could put something in the rack that wasn't safe for people who were near the rack, that type of thing. So, it's, the location that was chosen was acceptable to both the city and the county, and there was a pretty exhaustive search in the area for a suitable location.
Okay. Robert?
I was on the committee, and it was exhausting. But it does not preclude, you know, higher technology. We talked about the location of the fiber optics, and where it was located. I'm sure the artist is aware of that, and, but it was not, you know, when they do this, I think that we recognized, when we started this process, that technology is changing very rapidly. And it gives us the best opportunity right now to deal with what we have, and potential for the future. That's basically the conclusion I think we came to, isn't that right? Anna?
Okay. Anna, do you have some other comments?
Just a couple things. The agreement states that, the agreement is for a 15-year installation, and that can be changed in writing, but it is for 15 years. And I think my sense is that, to incorporate fiber optics or a liquid screen, that it becomes a new project, or a very different project. We tackled this concern with the existing newspaper racks to try to address that problem, and this is what we've come up with, so I guess those were my thoughts.
David?
Oh, I guess two things. One is, I don't think that that location is bad. I think that it's maybe not the choice that we wanted, but we don't always get the choices that we want. And I think that there's nothing wrong with that one. I think there's no point in trying to speculate how news is going to be delivered five years from now, or 10 years from now, because who knows what kind of gizmo somebody's going to be able to pull out of their back pocket? I think that it makes sense that we've got a design that addresses what we know now about how newspapers are delivered, how the news is distributed now. If there is, at some later point, some new favorite technology that comes across, being able to put that into this becomes a second design problem, and would be, as Anna said, I think, a second project.
Okay. Dennis?
You know, with all that said, I think it actually is a very successful solution. I think it's handsome. I like the historic involvement of the, you know, the various newspapers that might be selected, that can be translucent, and still be read, and, you know, have some kind of historic background in it. And, you know, since this is made out of a panel of glass, or frosted glass, it's kind of hard to imagine how the sheriff's department would be worried that somebody could hide behind it, when you could easily hide behind some of the landscape pottery plants that we have, you know, here and there on Main Street as well, or a parked car. So, I think it's pretty successful, and yes, we're going to be spending some money, but, you know, this is really the initial, this is the initial kickoff project for the Arts Commission, and I think they did a commendable job, and I'd just like to say that.
Okay. Oh, Tom, yes. Go ahead.
I apologize. This item's taken longer than it should have, but the, I have a, something of note, that this agreement is just the agreement with the county, related to the installation of the piece. The agreement with the artist has been pulled, and one reason it's been pulled is there are still ongoing discussions related to compensation. And that is something that'll be brought back to you, related to the artist's contract. So that is something that we'll have to bring back to you as we get that compensation resolved.
Okay. David, did I see your hand for a final comment?
Oh, I just wanted to say that this is a newsstand that really says news. I like the design, and I'm looking forward to seeing it implemented.
Dennis, if you'd be willing to take the chair, very briefly, I just wanted to share a brief comment about this one.
Okay. Mr. Bowersox?
Yeah, I strongly support this. Look, friends, when we asked our staff to put public art in public places, nobody said it would be easy. We could build, you know, our downtown to be like any other downtown, and build all our streets to be like any other street in any other town, and that would be the easiest and the cheapest. But that's not what we've asked our staff to do. This is a little bit of a learning thing. You know, this project's been harder, I think, than all of us thought. We just thought, "Let's move these newspaper racks and have an artist make it look a little bit nice," right? Well, we'll learn. But I strongly support it. I think, you know, I'm not concerned about the cost of this. I think it makes our downtown something unique. I think we spent, you know, $2 million on streetscape and, you know, two-tone bricks, and that makes our downtown unique. We've even spent $50,000 to add a little bit of concrete, so that you can have some outdoor seating. Those things were worth it. Well, this is a lot less than some of the other things I think we've done in our downtown. And this adds, to me, something that's very unique, that shows character, that shows history. So I support our staff's work on it. I hope that we will get even better at integrating art and unique things into all of our public places over time, and I encourage you to support it as well.
Do you want to take the chair back? Or shall I continue on? I'd be happy to. Okay. Mr. Bowersox takes the chair. Okay. Charlie, is there a motion perhaps?
Yeah, I was going to just make a motion directly, but I'm just reminded that, you know, my first incarnation on the council, we approved a sculpture on the side of, you know, outside the city building, and we're still waiting for that 20th of the mayor's address. Anyway, I'm going to move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay. And there's a second. Mayor, did you have a comment about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we are working with the artist. I think we've made some progress, but you know, art is a slow process sometimes.
Okay. Any other comments? Oh, yeah, Diane?
I do think it's important to care about the cost of everything we do. And I do care about the cost of this.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All those in favor of sending this to council with a recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We'll see that at council next week on May 18th. That is the last of the ordinances. Item 14, as you recall, was pulled, and staff will bring it back when it is ready for us. Our last piece tonight is a budget review, and the mayor has passed out an updated, I think with a typo correction, welcome message, her message at the beginning of the budget document. We have Ron Eldridge, our city comptroller, here, and I believe that Ron and the mayor will be telling us about the proposed budget for fiscal year 2009-2010. Mayor, do you want to start us off with an introduction of the budget plan?
I did hand out a revised letter, May 8th, 2009. To correct a mistake, I had $750 million. It should be $750,000. The difference between our revenues and expenditures, that's Ron's estimate for the current year. But the summary of all this is that we have a budget of $48 million in spending, and that's an increase of 3.7% over the current year. We have revenues of $43 million, and we're using $5 million in accumulated reserves for our capital improvements. And that's what we do every year. We put money from the general fund into the capital improvement fund. We are doing much better than most governments. We have a balanced budget, and it's mostly because of our sales tax, that we've gotten new retail. You know about the Meyer store? We also have gotten more income tax and motor fuel tax, because of our special census, which was completed last year. We are not sure when the US economy will begin to recover, so this is a hold-the-line budget. I think the economy's going to recover this year. I have a whole quarter bet on that. Not with Ron, but with somebody at the university. So we're really in pretty good shape, and we've gotten, we're the first local government in Illinois to get the stimulus money, because we were ready to go on Windsor Road, and thanks to our Public Works Director and our Public Works staff, we have $1.275 million in federal stimulus money for Windsor Road and Goodwin Avenue. We are holding the line on our property tax rate. So I think we have a very nicely balanced budget here, and we're very fortunate, and... And I'd like to turn it over to Ron.
Thank you. I know the hour's late, so I'm going to be very short, short as possible. This is for the period of July of 2009 to 2010. That makes you feel old to say 2010. It's, as the mayor says, balanced with no new taxes. I did have to mention that we did have an increase in the sur benefit tax, which was, you know, above inflation 10% because of, we talked about that before last week. So maintains the same property tax rate, $1.29, that's the same rate as Champaign. Maintains all our current service levels, and there are no employee reductions in the budget. It continues our investment in our library, over $3 million, which is up 5.2% over last year. Continues the investment in economic development for the city. This budget includes $3.4 million in economic development efforts. Continues our investment in infrastructure, our roads, our sewers, lighting, bike paths, our signals, over $8.7 million are included. Continues our investment in downtown Urbana. $2.4 million is included in this budget in loans, grants, rent subsidies, marketing, property acquisitions, studies, and capital improvements related to the downtown Urbana area. And it continues our investment in our social service agencies. The total amount in the budget is $318,000, and city contribution is up 4%. This slide shows that we have a good balance of our revenues, which is an excellent thing. If sales tax is down, or fees, or, excuse me, utility tax is down, it can be balanced out by one of the other revenue sources, and they often do move in opposite directions at the same time. So that's a very good thing. Contrary to, for example, like, school district is pretty much reliant on the property tax only. Our expenses by our program, public safety is the largest, 34%, that's police and fire. Public works is 18%. You could combine public works with capital improvements, they're related, as the mayor's done, which would make them 36%. Community economic development is 14%. Library, 7%, and others are 9%. Our operating expenses in the general fund by category, and this shows that, as you can see, if we were to have to make any major changes in our general operating fund, it's going to have to be done in personnel costs, because that makes up almost two-thirds of that entire budget. And that's not unusual. Most cities are, I think, exactly in those lines. Briefly on some of the revenues, our total general operating revenues are $24 million, and that's up, I'm projecting that to be up 2.9%. 2% of that is due to regular growth, and then 0.9% is due to the Meyer and the census, Meyer store and the census. And in pages 25 to 40 of the budget document, you see a long discussion, lengthy discussion on all our revenues, the base, how they're calculated, and historical trends in the past, and projections in the future. Sales tax is one of our largest. That includes, I'm including now the hotel motel and the food and beverage tax here. The city share, it's a city share of the tax, 7.75% is the total rate. The city share is 2.25%, 1% on food and drugs and licensed autos. We impose additional half a percent on prepared foods and beverages. For next year, I'm estimating sales tax to be $10.2 million, up 3.3%. Again, 1.9% is what I would term as regular growth, and then 1.4% is due to the new Meyer store. It's important to, you know, separate out the regular growth from the things such as the census and the Meyer store, because, you know, you've got to look at those percentages and say, oh, boy, it's gone up 3.4% year after year after year. Well, it really doesn't, because you have to make sure you understand the reason why those percentages are going up. Certainly, there's no question that our revenues are feeling the economic depression, just like all other cities. Our current year, '08-'09, through January sales, before the Meyer store, our January sales are down 3.3%. That's still much better than many cities that I've looked at, but nevertheless, is a negative number. And after the Meyers, it's only flat. So, it's tough if you, one of your largest revenue items, sales tax, is flat. That's not going to cut it very long. Utility tax is a 5% tax on the cost of natural gas and water, 6% on telephones, there's a flat rate on electricity. And for next year, I've estimated growth to 2.1%. For our current year, through February's receipts, we are exactly flat in our utility tax of what we received the year before. State income tax is one of the hardest-hit revenues because of the state economy. It's a, we receive a percentage of the state income tax classes based on our population. For next year, I've estimated a flat growth in the state income tax, and that's based on projection given me by the Illinois Department of Revenue. For current year, our state income tax is down 8%, and that's pretty close to all cities. We are, we are a little better because there's 2% that is from new amounts from the census that has helped us in our population and the formula. Our property tax rate, we mentioned $1.29, same as Champaign, same as it was last year. I am projecting our SESS value to grow 5.75% next year. 3% would be new construction, and the balanced 2.75% would be inflationary growth on current properties. Now, I know the mayor may think that's a little aggressive, because I think she doesn't think it's going to quite be that high. And it may not be. But it's difficult to project SESS value growth, because things come on at different times, and the SESSer may have certain values, but she doesn't always control when those values come on. So I'm still sticking with that. Maybe we'll have to bet another quarter on that, see how close we can come on that. I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that that will come true, because SESS property tax has been one of the best revenue producers for the state of Urbana in the last five or six years. It had, our SESS value, though, has definitely slowed down. You see there, in '06, it was, we had a growth of 8.5%. In '07, it dropped to 7%. Last year, it dropped to 6.6%. And this current year, it's dropped to 6.2%. So that, there's definite, a definite trend there, it's not hard to pick up on. The city is approximately 16% of the total property tax rate. The schools, about 52%. So it's really tough for city to affect the property, total property taxes that citizens paying, even if we wanted to reduce it dramatically. The total rate for Urbana this year is 8.2237. Champaign's is 7.31, that's about 12% higher. That's pretty close to what it's been, just increased very slightly, a little bit more this year. But over the last 15 years or so, that rate has come down dramatically, the difference between the two property tax rates. And we've reduced our overall tax rate about 15% in that same timeframe, and that was even, even with the passing, I believe, of about approximately five referendums that were approved by the voters to increase the property tax rate. So the Urbana governments have really tried hard to lower that property tax rate. Operating fund expenses, salary adjustments are per the salary agreements in place, 12% increase on employee health insurance costs, and 15% on employee pension costs. Department heads were asked to maintain the same supplies and contractual costs at the same amounts as last year. Even with those, that constraint, our total expenditures went up 5.2%, probably mostly because of that first item. There's one additional, a non-recurring full-time equivalent in the budget, that's an intern for the Windsor Road project for 15-month period, and then that position will go away. That would be in lieu of hiring a contractor, contractor to do that monitoring on Windsor Road. There's some increases in salt, asphalt, concrete, and lighting supplies, just due to the increases we've talked about earlier in some of those areas. For individual departments, you'll see police are 5.5%, fire 8.6%, public works 6.3%, library Our total employees for the city are 327. Other some other items of interest that I get asked about, the budget does include $907,000 in payments to the school district and the Urbana Park district, and TIF projects, vocational training reimbursements, and TIF surplus distribution. And that includes this year, a new $400,000 item for air conditioning for King School. There is approximately $8.5 million in Provena taxes that are still under dispute. The court cases in, at the Illinois Supreme Court, I have no idea, I don't think anyone knows when that may be resolved. Those monies were returned to Provena, so they have them, but Illinois Department of Revenue attorneys I've talked to feel very strongly that they're going to win that case. And if they do, that'll be an interesting discussion that we can have with that 8.5 million and TIF 3, along with the other governments, what they could be used for. We also are holding 2.2 million in Carl taxes, under the, sort of the same questions. That, that's not a TIF tax there. That's city money, but it's being held in escrow now in this budget. So again, we will have to figure out what we might do with that, if indeed we ever are awarded that. Our largest equipment purchase in the budget is a class IV dump truck with our snow and plow equipments, costs $823,000 for those, six of those. There's also 1.7 million in CDVG and home expenses to assist low-income housing in the census tracts. And one, believe it or not, fact, I'm not going to talk about all of them, is historically, back in October 9th of 1871, Urbana lost most of its downtown due to a huge fire. And believe it or not, that's the exact same day the Chicago fire started. So I don't know if a cow was the culprit here in Urbana, or...
Two children.
...found out.
No.
A chicken.
It wasn't a chicken. It was two children who were trying to burn the legs off of a bug in a garage or something. I forgot.
Have to take your word for that. That's right.
And you, of course, weren't personally involved, right, Dennis?
A little before my time.
Well, next year, '09-'10 is adequate and looks good. There could be a lot of difficult decisions in fiscal, in the following year, '10-'11. Now, I give you that, that's 18 months in the future, and a lot of things can change, and we'll know a lot more about the economy and other things. But our reserve funds have been drawn down due to various projects, down to about $600,000. Our pensions, we project a constant 15% growth in our pensions over the next three or four years, even if the economy turns around. The three bargaining contracts all expire on June 30th of 2010, so they will all have to be renegotiated that following year. And each sal, each 1% of salary adjustment costs about $151,000. And the new revenues, if the revenues were to increase 3.9% in that year, that'd be an additional one, about approximately $1.25 million to spend. And just in the pensions, health insurance, and a minimal increase in supplies and contractual comes up to 1.2. So you see, that doesn't leave very much for salary adjustments, when each 1% costs $151,000. So that was one of the reasons why this budget was prepared in a very lean-on-austere manner, without really allowing anyone to think much about new additions, new service levels, new costs, because of the uncertainty. And this, the chart in the budget really shows that, well, you see, that the line on the left, which is labeled '08, shows that the revenues, the blue, are ahead of the expenses, and that was actually last year, and we finished about $1 million in revenues ahead of expenses in the general fund. This current year, '08-'09, I'm projecting that that will go down to about $750,000, still ahead, though. And for the next year's budget, '09-'10, you see the lines are identical, that's where they balance out. But things do, if those projections come true, and things do not change in the, even in the revenues, you'll see that then the expenses for the following year, '11, go above the revenues. Or we'd have to, obviously, we'd have to make some adjustments to bring those lines back down. And the budget schedule is Tuesday, May 6th, is scheduled for Public Works, Police, Fire, and Community Development staff. And then Monday, June 1st, we have the library and all other departments, and we have a public hearing on June 1st. And the actual budget is up for adoption on June 1st, if the council would choose to. It could be deferred, it must be approved before July 1st. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Does anyone have any closing questions for Ron? Charlie?
Ron, thank you. Just real quickly, I asked this question last year and I've forgotten the answer. Each penny of increase in the property tax generates, what, $50,000?
I believe it is close to $50,000. Yes. I'll have to give the exact number.
Okay, that's, that's close enough. That's what I recall. Okay, I just wanted to check that. And I guess my biggest concern is the, is our $600,000 reserve fund, which, you know, clearly was nice when it was up around $3 million. That money, I think the 2-point-something went to the landfill, right? Is that how much that, what was the final number on the landfill?
I think, I'd have to look, but I believe it was close to $3 million.
$3 million, okay.
Over a long period of time, yeah.
No?
How much was it?
One and a half. Oh, one and a half. Okay.
I'll have to look that up. Make sure that's...
Another bet, we can put a quarter on that one.
Yeah, somewhere between 1.5 and 2, something like that. So, but given that Bill paid for it, I think he probably knows the right numbers, so...
He might be right, because there were, the university did, I forget, the university did reimburse us a considerable amount of that.
Yeah, so, so that, so, you know, if we should get any of those monies from either the local hospitals, I know right where I want to put a big chunk of it, so. But that's, that's dreaming. I guess the other thing is, do we have any word, you know, obviously, one of the things that can push us along and may help us get over economic humps is, do we have any idea if Menards is going to do anything in the coming year?
I think we've got Libby Tyler here to help tell us about Menards' plans as we know them.
I did check in with Menards anticipating that we would have questions, at least during our tour, and the answer is that they are not opening any stores currently. But the good news is that they are completing their road plans for Route 130, and they assure us that they're not going anywhere. All the land is paid for, there's no mortgage. They're committed to this project, and the company itself is strong, it's doing well. So they are, soon as the economy turns around a little bit and they start building stores again, they want to get going, and that's why they're endeavoring to have a shovel-ready road project. And they did, again, ask our assistants in working with the state to get the, some compensation for that, the high-cost road improvements.
Charlie?
Okay, yeah. I come back to thinking about this, this road cross-section, and I'm just not convinced that IDOT really knows what it's doing. I mean, they build these great, huge, wide roads. We've seen examples of situations where, you know, we don't really need such a wide road if things are properly designed. You know, I mean, is there any, is there, do we have any recourse to ask for somebody to take a new, modern look at what could be done to minimize the concrete that we have to put down and make permanent destroying land?
Okay, yeah.
We met with our state senator and state representative this morning, and apparently this region of IDOT has different standards than the rest of the state. So that is an issue. And who knows, maybe a roundabout would work there, cheaper than the stoplights.
So, you know, if we're running under different standards, can we, can we get that...
Well, I wrote to both of them today, and we talked to them this morning, and it is a problem that people have recognized, and Bill Gray can certainly expand on this, but I did write to both of them and ask them for help with the funding and/or help with the standards.
Okay. Bill, did you have any comment to add to that?
Over a year ago, a group of public works directors met with the Secretary of Transportation and the Director of Highways to bring about these disparities or inconsistencies statewide, and they... and they had responded back to us via a letter through the Illinois Municipal League about how they would look into revisiting their access guideline policies, and in general, just the criterion that's used to analyze trips being generated by development, what design year do you use, can you look at phasing projects, these sorts of things. Again, to have a little more consistent analysis throughout the state, not district by district. Then the third item, of course, is just, this is a state route. Typically, in the past, there used to be state contributions, for a portion, not all, but for a portion of a state route improvement, and, you know, that's our main concern. So at this point, I have no news to deliver, other than we're trying to look at these things. It may not be too late for Menard, but I wouldn't hold a lot of, I don't know, I wouldn't hold a lot of promise that things may change. But the fact that they haven't started is good, because it allows, you know, maybe some changes to occur, and maybe reassessment. Now, the bad news for Menard is, is that if there was a change of criteria or standards, then literally, the engineers would have to go back to the drawing boards, and we're talking, you know, like, hundreds of thousands of dollars they've spent in, in the work so far. They've designed about $8 million worth of improvements, so...
Yep. Okay, any other questions about the budget review piece for Ron or the mayor? Okay, hearing none. That is the end of that agenda item. We will, in two weeks, begin hearing department presentations on their portions of the budget. In closing tonight, I think the mayor has a proclamation about Bike to Work Month and Week to share with us here, and that'll be our last item.
Well, Bill's here. I'd also like to thank him for the orientation packet that he, he sent around, and I believe all the pieces are on the, on Public Works' website, right? Yeah, see? Not exactly.
I think that, that may not be there yet. I'm, oh, on the packets, yes, yes, it is.
Okay. This piece is, all this material is somewhere on our website.
Correct.
Thanks, Bill. Mayor?
Okay, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation, and whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas the League of American Cyclists and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now therefore, I, Laurel Lunt, pressing mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2009 as Bike Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage all Urbana residents to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways.
Thank you very much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.